Okay, everyone, if we might resume. Don't forget to put your phones on silent, please. And we are going to go back to, starting with Agenda Item 61. Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting. Bill Number 2019-19. City Attorney, let's go at it again.
Yes, ma'am. Bill Number 2019-19, An Ordinance to Repeal LVMC Section 19 dot 10 dot 105 Pertaining to the Repurposing of Certain Golf Courses in Open Spaces and to Provide for Other Related Matters.
Okay. And Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I move to strike Agenda Item 61.
And that's your motion?
And that's my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion to strike Agenda Item 61. Please vote. And please post. That motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 62. Bill Number 2019-21. Count, Mayor Protem, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, please.
Bill Number 2019-21, An Ordinance to Amend LVMC Chapter 9 point 38 to Establish an Additional City Procedure for Retrieving Shopping Carts and Laundry Carts That Have Been Abandoned or Used Without Authorization and to Provide For Other Related Matters.
And Mayor Protem, a motion, please.
Thank you. I would like to move to approve Item 62.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 62. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. Let's go on to 63. Bill Number 2019-22. Mayor Protem, please.
Yep.
Would you like the bill read?
Yes, please.
Bill Number 2019-22, An Ordinance Relating to Impacts on Public Rights of Way, Amending LVMC Chapter 10 dot 48 to Establish Prohibitions Regarding the Attaching of Certain Items to Trees, Poles, Structures, Amenities, Walls, and Fences Within or Near Public Rights of Way, Along With Associated Authority to Remove Such Items and to Provide For Other Related Matters.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I move to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 63. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. We'll go on to Agenda Item Bill Number 2019-23. Would you please read the bill?
Bill Number 2019-23, First Amendment. An Ordinance to Amend LVMC Title 13 to Add a New Chapter 60 to Authorize the Removal and Disposition of Signs and Intention-Getting Devices That Have Placed on City Property or in Public Rights of Way Illegally and to Provide for Other Related Matters. Just a quick side note, Your Honor, if, on this item, we were missing a word in the title and in the summary. The word is "been," so it would read "have been placed." "Have been placed." So therefore, on the motion, can we get it with the Second Amendment, please?
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, I move to approve Item Agenda 64 with the amendment.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve with amendment, Second Amendment Number 65. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. And we're on to Agenda Item 66. Sixty-five, excuse me. Something happened here. Nothing happens in my brain, but it's my... You electrified me there. Okay. Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at a Later Meeting. Items Number 65 through 67. Bills Number 2019-24 through 2019-26 will be heard at a later meeting. We'll move on now to new bills. New bills. This is Agenda Item Number 68. Bill Number 2019-27 will be heard at the Recommending Committee Monday, August 5th. 2019. City Attorney, would you read the new bill, please?
Yes, ma'am. Bill Number 2019-27, An Ordinance Granting to Zayo Group LLC, A Limited Liability Company Organized and Existing Under the Laws of the State of Delaware and Authorized to Do Business in Nevada, A Non-Exclusive Franchise for a Telecommunications Service Within the Corporate Limits of the City of Las Vegas, Subject to and in accordance with that certain franchise agreement entered into between the City of Las Vegas and Zayo Group LLC, and Providing for Other Related Matters. And a side note on this item as well, Madam Mayor. Just for clarification to the public, the bill, as noted on the actual bill, is proposed by Mr. Ameling, the Chief Financial Officer. However, we incorrectly wrote Jorge Cervantes in the Agenda Summary page and Agenda Item. So just for clarification, the bill is proposed by our Chief Financial Officer, Gary Ameling.
Thank you very much. New bills. New bill, 2019-27, is assigned to the August 5th, 2019 Recommending Committee Members Consisting of Councilman Anthony, Mayor Protem Fiore, and Councilman Knutson. Okay? Okay?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. Two attend. If, for any reason, they are unable to, you will contact me, please, Madam Clerk, and find substitutes as necessary at my discretion. And so now we move on to Number 70.
Yep.
Okay. For possible action, any items from the morning session that the council staff and/or applicant wishes to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, Item 84, SUP 76080. Applicant Owner, 121 North Fourth Street LLC at 121 North Fourth Street, has been withdrawn without prejudice and requested by the applicant. And Item Number 92, VAR 75824. Applicant RAD Management LLC. Owner, DSRS Properties LLC, 1.70 acres at 835 Shetland Road, would like to be held in abeyance till 8 August 21st, 2019, requested by the applicant.
Thank you. And that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Thank you. This motion, please vote and please post on those items. Councilman Creer? Got it. That motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 71. Abeyance Item, Public Hearing Discussion for Possible Action to Consider Request for a Waiver and/or Reduction of Fees Totalling $47,851.10 Out-of-Pocket Costs and $97,500 Civil Penalties, for a total of $145,351.10, recorded against the property located at 4550 East Van Buren Avenue Property Owner Realty Data Group LLC, Ward 3, and that should show a typo correction for Councilwoman Diaz. This is a public hearing. I declare it open, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon. This is Vicky Ozuna, Code Enforcement Section Manager. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and the council. The item before you today is a public hearing for a request of fees and civil penalties at the request of Realty Data Group LLC, owner for the property at 4550 East Van Buren Avenue, which is located in Ward 3. The City of Las Vegas had to complete five abatements from 2013 to 2018. Several of these abatements required the property to be secured and cleaned, and another abatement required us to demolish the damaged structure on site and to reclaim the property several times. The total outstanding for hard costs is $47,851.10, which is not a waivable amount, and outstanding daily civil penalties of $97,500, for a total of outstanding of $145,351.10. This item was previously heard at City Council on June 19th, 2019, but due to the property being out of compliance, the item was held in abeyance. The property is vacant and currently in a state of compliance. Staff requests that you deny this request of waiver.
Thank you. And sir, if you'd announce your name and your address for us, and then make any comments you wish.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council. My name is Danny Garcia. I am a principal for Realty Data Group, and the address is 4550 East Van Buren Avenue.
Mr. Summerfield, anything to add here?
No, ma'am. Just as mentioned in briefing yesterday, the applicant on this item did address the concerns that were raised at the last meeting and has gone out and cleaned up the property in order to get their active case closed.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on Agenda Item 71, please come forward, state your name for the record. Okay, hearing, and seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, and I will turn this over to Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to know, what is the future vision for 4550 East Van Buren Avenue?
The reason of the request for a waiver would be because we are planning, in the next year of 2020, to build a residential, single-family house, basically, and having the high abatement fees and things like that just doesn't allow us to pencil in, you know, an actual building of the house. So requesting a waiver would be very helpful for us to actually commence actually plannings and things like that, and we would be gladly covering the hard costs, you know, to repay the city, and just requesting that the $97,000 can get reduced, whatever the council and Madam Mayor can agree to.
Thank you. You know, there's a lot of time and effort that the city staff do have to put in in upkeeping property that is sometimes vacant, or the property owners are not taking care of. I want to hear on the record your commitment to be maintaining this property moving forward every week, making sure you're going out there doing your due diligence, ensuring there's no encampments, there's no trash, that it's kept up to code. Because the reason why it's accrued all of these fees is because it's not been checked in on periodically. So before we agree on anything about reduction, I do want to hear from you or the Realty Data Group's commitment to maintaining this piece of property that's in Ward 3.
Yes, and we agreed to do that. We actually have been cleaning the property numerous times, even after the June 19th meeting that we had. We had already cleaned it previous to that, and then even two days, three days ago, they had already dumped mattresses and things like that. So it's difficult to keep it clean, but we will try and maintain it, you know, as a weekly thing, to be driving by it and keeping it clean for the rest of this year and then following our plans.
That's great. I know that the community and the residents near there will be so grateful for upkeep, and so will Ms. Ozuna and her team. So thank you for that.
Councilwoman, can I interrupt and ask a question?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Please. Thank you. You purchased this property in June of 2019?
No, no. I mentioned that when we were here this last meeting.
Right. Yeah, I remember. When did you purchase the property?
I think it's... I forget the exact date. Ms. Vicky, do you have?
I do have the date. It's February 21st, 2019.
February 21st.
Okay, February.
So these penalties that were on it, when you purchased the property?
Correct. They were from also...
Were you aware that these penalties were on the property?
We were aware of some, but not all, yes.
Okay. So going forward, knowing we've been discussing this, how are we going to go on with having all that knowledge and those liens taken care of before sales takes place? Are we moving forward with some type of staff review and access before the finalization of a purchase carrying all these penalties?
Unfortunately, property owners are not required to check back with us so that we can sign off. In many cases, title companies, they know if they see a notice and order recorded on a property, or they see our liens, they know that they need to get payoff demands from us. But that's only if people are going through escrow. I don't believe they went through escrow in this situation, and so a lot of times properties get quick claimed to each other, to different people, and that does not go through any official process.
So my sense is, how do we get in front of this instead of behind it going forward? I think I recall over the past eight years, just these continuums, and this isn't correct.
We'll have to look into maybe possible changes at legislature or something that's going to require owners to check somehow with the city before they purchase something, even if they only go through quick claim. I don't know what the possibilities of that is, but we can look into it.
And there might be best practices in other cities and states that we could look to, that we could implement here at the city. Because it seems amazing to me that these lines, these liens and penalties exist, and you just, best way to get rid of them, work them all up, don't pay for the cleanup and keeping everything proper for the neighborhood, and then we end up losing money, but not the hard costs, of course. So let me turn it back to you, Councilwoman. I just want to know what we can be doing.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diaz. So Ms. Ozuna, are you saying that this didn't go through like a regular escrow? It was just quick claimed?
Correct.
So was this quick claimed by a family member to you?
That is correct.
Yes?
It wasn't through escrow. It was quick claimed directly from the...
So is this a... Is it a family member of yours that quick claimed it to you?
No.
Just a friend?
It was a business, another business partner.
So your business partner quick claimed you this address?
Yes.
Knowing that you had all of these fees on it?
I knew that it had liens. I just didn't know the exact amounts.
But if he's your business partner, that kind of seems a little shady.
Not necessarily because...
Like, your business partner you're in business with, right? He has all these liens. Well, let's get rid of the liens. Let me quick claim you the property, Mr. Business Partner, because you know your business partners. It's like your wife. Your business partners, there's no secrets.
Yeah.
I don't like this deal.
The thing is, it's the type of investment, their property, that's basically, like I mentioned last time, it's one of the dilemmas here in Las Vegas. We have...
It's not a dilemma. It's shady.
Not the actual process. The problem is that we have over 30,000 of these properties and...
We need to come up with something. Staff needs to...
Councilwoman Diaz, it's all yours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And Ms. Ozuna, I wanted to ask you to weigh in, since you've been obviously the one that's been dealing with this property. I do understand, like, I know keeping the lot vacant is not going to be helpful moving forward, right? And I'm looking for the best solution for Ward 3 and for our city staff. I don't want you guys having to go out there every single moment to check up on it. So obviously, I do want to keep an open mind to making sure that we move forward with getting a property there. Hopefully, you know, someone can call that home, and then it'll move forward. But I want to hear your input as far as, I know that we can't budge on hard costs. That's money that the city has invested on keeping up that property that we don't have any responsibility to keep up. But what are your thoughts about the civil penalty?
On the civil penalties, the reason why they were instituted, the council back in 2000, I believe it was 2007, when they agreed to add by ordinance, you know, that would allow us to do civil penalties, the reasoning was is the fees that we get for doing abatements and stuff, it doesn't cover all of our staff costs. It doesn't cover, you know, it's hard to penalize somebody criminally when they're not around. So we utilize them to, you know, hopefully catch somebody's interest in taking care of their property. And in 2014, we actually ended up doing a, revising our civil penalty process or policy by capping our penalties at 39 days. If we were a perfect machine and from beginning to end with noticing the property owner, we would have everything taken care of in 39 days. So we curtailed those penalties, anything past 39 days for abatement items. They do, they have a purpose in keeping property owners responsible, and in this situation, the property went from Charles Bambi Compton, who they owned the property, they bought it back in 2001, and then Smith Parker LLC purchased it in 2017, aware of penalties and the costs that were on the property, and then for whatever reason, they signed it over to these gentlemen today. And Smith and Parker, they were an irresponsible property owner, too. I believe one of the abatements took place while they owned it. So in this case, while I want to see something positive happen with this property, you know, I do believe that the city would be remiss in not collecting some of the civil penalties back. And, you know, maybe that'll also make them be a better property owner.
And Councilwoman, Councilwoman Seaman has a comment or a question, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a quick question, because I did a little research, and didn't you go through a national title insurance company, the same one on all three properties, WFG National Title? And if you did, you knew exactly what the liens were. Is that correct?
We only use the title company for the reason of acquiring a title-approved notary to do the transfer from the previous owners till now. That's the only reason. If it goes into title, title would obviously, will notify the city, and then they would request payouts and things like that, but because of the fact that most of these properties are, let's say, worth 150,000 to 200,000, and then some of those abatements have reached over 200,000, there is no actual way to close title without having those liens paid off. And nobody's going to pay the $200,000 lien on a $200,000 house that still needs $60,000 in repairs.
Madam Mayor, through you to Councilwoman Seaman. In this case, WFG Title is not, I don't know that they're involved. It's in the next three cases that they are involved.
Oh. Oh, okay. So there's three more?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, back to you, Councilwoman. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm doing math really quick here. Let's just make sure, I know that you have more costs, and I hope you keep your word to us, the council today. One, keeping the property up, but two, also making sure you're going to revitalize that piece of property by making sure you build.
Yes.
So I will be, this is the only time I'm going to, because I see the amount, the total is pretty much what, you would pretty much be investing all of this, and I don't know how much your return would be on your final product, so I'm keeping that in mind. So just, this is the only, I think, exception moving forward where you're going to pay all of the, on Item 71, paying all of the hard costs, $47,851.10, and I'm going to reduce the civil penalties to 25% of that $97,500.
And are you putting a timeline?
Reducing it, but...
And if you would, just a timeline, when you expect payment, as you consider in your motion?
Or I guess, legal's wanting me to clarify. So reducing it by 75%, so he would have to pay 25% of that $97,500.
Okay, thank you.
So that amount would be $24,375.
Plus the $47,851.10.
For a total of $72,226.10.
Correct.
And would you want that to be paid within 30 days, which is what our...
Yes. I think it's taken some time for a resolution, so we need to be proactive in making sure we close it up.
Councilwoman Diaz, can we also clarify that this has to be paid before you quick claim it to another partner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else further?
You're in agreement with that, Mr. Garcia?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much. Okay, and that's your motion? The motion as you stated?
Motion is, just to clarify for the Councilwoman, it's all the hard costs remain and a reduction by 75% of the civil penalties, so the total civil penalties will be 25% of the $97,500.
And payable within 30 days?
Correct.
Okay, that's the motion. Please vote and please post.
Okay. Oh, what's happening?
And Councilwoman, yours isn't showing. Just, you can do an oral. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And please post. And that motion carries. And we'll now move on to Agenda Item 72. Public Hearing and Discussion for Possible Action to Consider Request for a Waiver and/or Reduction of Fees Totalling $6,501.50, an out-of-pocket cost, $16,500 in civil penalties, for a total of $23,001.50, recorded against the property of 5805 Carl Avenue, Property Owner, Pareno Jesus de Domingos, Ward 5, Councilman Creer. It's a public hearing. I declare it open, and back to you, Ms. Ozuna.
Vicky Ozuna, Code Enforcement Section Manager. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council. The item before you today is a public hearing for a request of waiver of fees and civil penalties for the property at 5805 Carl Avenue, which is located in Ward 5. A notice and order was issued May 10, 2017, and recorded May 25th, 2017, on the property that was owned, that was owned by Teresa Sanchez. William Richardson purchased the property on 6/21/2017 for $175,000 at a trustee sale. On June 15th, 2017, Code Enforcement Supervisor Tony Guarino spoke with Mr. Richardson, who advised he would have the property secured and cleaned within a week. On 6/21/2017, Supervisor Guarino verified that no cleanup activity or securing of the property had taken place. Due to the request of assistance to get this property secured as soon as possible from Metro, as this property's vacant, open status was creating nuisance issues for the neighborhood, it was determined that the abatement would move forward, and due to noncompliance of Mr. Richardson, the owner at the time of the abatement, we went ahead and had the property abated. The City of Las Vegas had to abate violations due on the property being vacant, open, accessible on July 18th, 2017, and was completed August 8th, 2017 by contractor. The abatements abated were securing the property, removal of refuse and waste from all areas, pumping of a polluted-infested pool, and removal of stored materials. A letter was sent to Mr. Richardson on 9/14/2007 advising of a hearing being conducted to approve the liens of the out-of-pocket costs to the city of $6,501.50 and, I'm sorry, and the daily civil penalties of $16,500. Both of these were, liens were recorded. The out-of-pocket costs were recorded October 10th, 2017, and the civil penalties were recorded June 18th, 2018. Mr. Richardson did not attend the hearing, which was the appropriate time for him to have argued or protested against the daily civil penalties. Code Enforcement received a request of waiver on March 13th, 2018, from Mr. Richardson and his attorney at the time, Bob Olson. The hearing was scheduled for April 25th, 2018. Staff verified ownership information before the hearing, and it was determined the property had been sold on April 13th, 2018, to the current property owner. The hearing was conducted as scheduled and denied by the designee who ruled that Mr. Richardson no longer had legal standing to request a waiver. Mr. Richardson could have filed for judicial review in district court if he disagreed with this determination. Staff is requesting that you deny this request of waiver.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to be heard on Agenda Item 72?
Yes, John Sullivan, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, representing both the current owner and Mr. Richardson on this matter. So, am I being loud?
No, no, no.
I saw the push-down. So this was filed by my partner, Bob Grunauer, who's out of the country, so I have the honor of being before you today on this. So here, as opposed to what you just listened to, we have a bad actor for which the property ended up getting leaned. We have somebody who bought the property and entirely rehabilitated the property and then sold it to the current owner. The expense just for the rehabilitation on this property was $71,600 just in construction and closing costs to get this done. So it's not like you see in many, including the last, where you just saw somebody just cleaning up brush. I mean, this house has granite counters in it now, floors changed, repainted, cleaned. I have pictures of what it looks like before, at the time it was bought of auction, and we'll replace those with pictures that show what it looks like now. Cover up that one. So what you do have is a timing issue, and we've had a discussion in Councilman Creer's office with Ms. Ozuna. There is no question, the contractor owner, the middle party of this bad actor, contractor owner, current owner, had timing issues in getting this thing filed and could... getting this thing filed and could have done it earlier and could have dealt with it. And so they acknowledge that, but at the end of the day, these civil penalties are really charges against the bad actor. I mean, you put it onto the property because, same as homeowners, that's all you can really attach to somebody who's not behaving. But Mr. Richardson's not the bad actor. The current owner's not the bad actor. We now have a property that's back on the tax rolls, is proper within its community, was sold for a price that, you know, raises the values of properties around it because it was entirely rehabilitated.
Thank you.
And so what we're asking for is clearly to pay the hard cost fees and to have the civil penalty fees removed.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this agenda item 72? I'll close public hearing and turn it over to you, Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure if anybody has any comments, but I have been hearing about this much longer than I want to be talking about it with these guys. And I just want to make a recommendation to keep the hard costs of $6,501.50 and then waive 50% off of the civil penalties to make it $8,261.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion, yes.
Is there agreement there? Did you wish any other comment?
No, I just, I think it's harsh, listening to the last person have 75% waived to have 50% waived on a property that's back on the tax rolls, but it's certainly at the option of the council as to what you'll do.
Okay. And timeline, 30 days?
30 days.
Okay. All right, there's a motion on agenda item 72. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to agenda item 73. Public hearing and discussion for possible action to consider a request for a waiver and/or reduction of fees totaling $6,162.61 in out-of-pocket costs, $19,500 in civil penalties for a total of $25,662.61. Recorded against property at 1617 Yellow Rose Street. Property owner, Amanda Dick, Anthony Mark Jr., and GOC O'Ange Joan Garcia, Ward 5, Councilman Creer. Public hearing, which I declare open. We're back to you, Ms. Azuna.
Viki Azuna, Code Enforcement Section Manager. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. The item before you today is a public hearing for a request of waiver of fees and civil penalties for the property at 1617 Yellow Rose Street, which is located in Ward 5. Notice and order was issued on April 20, 2016.
Ms. Azuna? And down here, Deputy City Attorney Mayor, if you don't mind. I just, we have a question about this item before we proceed with the whole presentation, so we don't possibly waste time. We have an email from June 3 from an Anthony Mann and Dick, who we believe owns the property. He wrote, is this, I think you're familiar with email.
Yes.
He wrote suggesting that he's not represented by Mr. Grunauer to, can we find out if this is true? Because if Mr. Mann and Dick doesn't want any appeal, that's kind of the issue that Legal has right now?
Yes, that is true. And he even emailed me last week to find out. Thank you. If he needed to be here today, I told him that was up to him, as he did not request his hearing. If he chose not to attend, it's his prerogative.
Okay, so who's appealing that? The property owner doesn't want to be involved?
The party standing before us and Mr. Richardson.
Okay. And what's his connection to the property, then?
He previously owned it before he sold it to Mr. Mann and Dick.
It's that situation, okay. All right. Our belief down here, Mayor, is that if the property owner is not appealing, obviously there's no standing for a request from someone who doesn't own the property, so we would advise rejecting any request for a waiver for this gentleman, and to an effect, I believe you could probably strike the item.
Okay, Councilman Creer, this is in your ward. Motion to strike, then?
Is that the appropriate?
I think it would be appropriate, as the owner did not request this hearing.
Great. Well, I'll make a motion to strike.
Thank you very much. Motion to strike here?
One question before I get started. I didn't know if you want to make a comment on that, Mr. Sullivan or not?
For sure. So the current owner did sign off on having this appealed in September of last year. And so there is an act of appeal that was filed by Mr. Grunauer with that signature, and we went through a process of discussing it. So we have an appeal signed by him moving forward, and it was allowed to move forward on this basis after being discussed. So I'm not sure why now that appeal sign that was filed no longer would be valid.
Maybe we can do this. If you, if it'd be better to strike it than to obey it until the August 21 meeting, if that's possible, so you can straighten this out before we strike it.
Yeah, we can hold, we can have a motion to hold it and obey it. I would say, response to that, the only thing would be, the city's aware via email that the property owner has no interest in an appeal now happening. Whatever the gentleman's agreement is with the property owner, that's their situation. What we know is that the property owner does not want to appeal the fines. And that's what we can go off of, and like Ms. Azuna said, therefore we, a strike would be appropriate.
I'd like to point out, too, that the property owner is extremely concerned, because his property has already been sent to tax roll, and at some point it could come up for auction in December with Clark County Treasures for these liens. He really just wants the liens paid. And as he has expressed to me in prior emails, you know, he was unaware of these liens when he closed. They came to him afterwards, and he was not happy to find out that there was $19,500 outstanding on his property. So I think you need to take that under consideration. And if you want to speak with the owner, I'll tell him to reach out to you.
But it's, okay, but the reason why it's here and is understanding, my understanding is that there was, that the owner was in compliance and that they wanted to move forward with this. That's my understanding.
Okay, so the application that the law firm provided to us included a copy from a waiver request that was signed back in September 2018, but it was never submitted at that time to our, to my department, my division. And so it was not processed. It didn't show up until they submitted their three requests to our division, and we processed the other two. We, I contacted all the property owners to verify if they were being represented by this attorney, and he very clearly told me he was not being represented by them on June 3.
So what's the letter, though? Even though it wasn't submitted when it was submitted, what is that?
The, what the attorney, apparently he had signed at one point, but they told him that they would get this taken care of really quickly, and it didn't happen.
But at one point, but at one point, he did sign off on it. We can't, we can't deny that. And now he's saying he's not being, so he went, so he's sort of gone back. And so my, my just concern would be to say, look, he signed it at one point, he told you something different, but he do have a signed document that says he does represent it. He sent an email to legal counsel, I guess.
No, I forwarded on the email that he sent to me on June 3.
That's the one you're talking about, the one he said he was not representing?
Correct.
Okay.
And then last week, he...
But, but, would it be right, and I open this up, I mean, to come back and say, look, maybe he's under, the applicant's under the impression that he has a letter signed by this person saying he's good. You have an email saying that he's not good. Is that not the case?
Well, how do you know, how can you validate that the email's really from him at all?
Right. That's all I'm saying, is that maybe there's a way to go about and get it notarized or something to say, yes, I'm on board, and then you come back and have an opportunity to do that.
And his interest, by the way, as part of that sale, Mr. Richardson has agreed to pay whatever your ultimate result is. So the current homeowner doesn't have an economic interest in the battle anymore because Mr. Richardson's going to pay it.
I understand that, but also...
But it's been signed at the time of the purchase.
But in order for us to discuss this property, it has to be, the owner has to give us rights to discuss this property.
Correct.
And that's where the issue is. So if, if, like, we shouldn't even really be discussing this if we don't have clear understanding if the owner hasn't given us...
But it is agendaized, and we can obey it, then they can come in and talk to you.
That's what I'm saying. Why don't they go back and work it out and then come back on the 21st?
Right. Rather than strike it, obey it to the 21st.
Yes. Did you have a comment, Mayor Portem?
Yes. So, Councilman Creer, if you obey it, Ms. Azuna, I, I'll wait for Ms. Azuna to come back to the podium.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. Thank you. No worries. It's all good. So there was a few questions on these three items, because I believe that they use the same title company as Councilwoman Seaman had pointed out. So could you just give us the real history? Because as I keep seeing these properties changing hands, it's very, very questionable.
And it was very surprising to me and my staff, because in our past history with dealing with waiver requests, we have literally had to beg title companies to sit on escrow funds for maybe 90 days while a certain part was taken care of during rehab or something, wasn't quite ready. And, but the property needed to change hands. And I mean, I had to, like, sign my life away that, you know, we are agreeing to do this. So in this instance, when these applications came in and I started researching it and found that there was one title company all involved, when I reached out to them, I was advised, well, they're friends of the, Mr. Richardson, so they just work with him on these type of things. And I don't know how that's...
Legal.
Legal, but that's something I guess we'll have to work on down the road. So...
Well, I think if we finish the issue, it's going to be obeyed.
Madam Mayor, just clarification for, just clarification for your concern, Mayor Portem. They're not friends. Mr. Richardson uses this title company and is in this business of rehabilitating homes. So he's in front of you here for three, because this civil penalty rule is only enforced in Las Vegas, right? Everybody else has the hard cost north Las Vegas. And even within the City of Las Vegas, it's only a certain percentage of homes that ever fall into this. And so even though he does dozens of homes a year in this business, only sees these things ever so often.
Okay, let's hear from Mr. Adams, City Manager.
But I just want to let you know, the title company was never, is not at risk. There's money sitting in escrow at the title company to pay for these things as part of that closing. So it's not a friendship. It's a normal business arrangement that allowed for an escrow to be set up so that it could be resolved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
I, the thing that I've scratched my head over on this, and I think something worth exploring, and I, aside from how you handle these three items, is how somebody could get to a closed real estate without satisfaction of liens. And the funds sitting in escrow, without coming back to the city, in my opinion, isn't a satisfaction of lien. Until we've actually received the funds and released the lien, I don't know how you could get to a closing on a piece of real estate. I know in my own personal situation, I couldn't even get the keys until we're recorded and closed and everything, and escrow was dispersed. So there's an issue here that we brought up in briefing that I think maybe our attorneys can explore, so that we don't continue to repeat the same thing over and over again, and get down to the end wire where is this undue pressure's placed on us, you as a council, at the last minute, where we're perceived to be standing in the way of an owner having full title to the property, when in fact, this should have been handled a long time ago at the very beginning of the transfer of the property.
So I think that, Wise, let's turn it to Legal to get back into it and make an assessment and inform us. But on this particular motion, this particular item number 73, the motions to obey it, which gives you time to come back with some cogent comment.
Right. The motion to obey is probably a good motion, as Councilman Creer kind of hit the issue on the head, which is, it's not that there's necessarily anything sorted with a request for a waiver by this gentleman, but it becomes an issue when we find out the current homeowner doesn't even care about the waiver happening. Then it becomes a standing issue legally. We don't have to have a hearing when the homeowner, property owner, doesn't want a waiver to happen. And I think that's essentially what Manager Azuna also concurred with. So on the legal basis of standing, unless the property owners want the waiver, we're not obligated to hold hearings for the owner two times ago or one time ago. And let's sort out, as Councilman Creer pointed out, what the current property owner wants, so we can do, hold it and obey it, and then we can come back and deal with it.
And so we don't get in this situation again. I think that's what Mr. Adams was saying. So, Legal, if you'll do that. Meanwhile, I did open a public hearing. Is there any, even though we're going to obey it, does anybody have any comments on this item? That I will close. Your motion is to obey to the, what was the date in August?
August 21st.
August 21st. So there is a motion, and please vote. And please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much. And now we move on to agenda item 74. Public hearing and discussion for possible action to consider a request for a waiver and/or a reduction of fees totaling $5,064 in out-of-pocket costs, $19,500 civil penalties for a total of $24,564. Recorded against property at 4995 Irene Avenue. Property owner, Saballos, Xavier and Elisa Pulido Edal and Balzarrel Janeth, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. And it's a public hearing. I declare it open. Let's talk about this one.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council, Viki Azuna, Code Enforcement Section Manager. The item before you today is a public hearing for a request of waiver of fees and civil penalties for the property at 4995 Irene Avenue. Notice and order was issued October 5, 2016 to the owner, Luis Jose Luis Meira Magna. Code enforcement hired a contractor to perform the abatement due to noncompliance on January 5, 2017. The abatement included securing all open doors and windows, removal of high weeds, removal of refuse waste graffiti, and a dilapidated shed that was in the rear yard. The abatement lien and civil penalties were approved on March 29, 2017. The out-of-pocket costs were $5,064 and were recorded on the property April 13, 2017. Civil penalties were approved of $19,500 and recorded on the property September 21, 2017. Mr. Richardson purchased the property on August 28, 2017 for $205,000. This property was sold to the current owners, Xavier Saballos, on May 1, 2018, for $365,000. Code enforcement received a request of waiver on April 25, 2019, from Mr. Richardson and his attorney, John Sullivan. The current property owner did request this hearing, and staff requests that you deny this request of waiver.
Thank you very much. Public hearing, anyone wishing to be heard on this property or this agendaized item?
Down here, Mayor, Deputy City Attorney Jeff Doherty. Just to emphasize what Manager Azuna said, the property owner on this item is interested in the waiver hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we bounced the ball. Any comment you want to make on this?
John Sullivan, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, again. Just again, pictures of the work that's been done.
I swear.
The spend on this home was almost $125,000 between construction carry and closing costs, incorporating the hard cost liens that are obviously not to be waived in any way, shape, or form. Would ask for a waiver of the $19,500 in civil penalty fees. Again, this is somebody who's coming in entirely renovated, a house. It's a pillar of its community at this point in time, did exactly what anybody would want of this. He's somebody who's in this industry, the prior owner, again, as I represent both of them. And I just think discouraging this kind of work by not rewarding the removal of those fees, which are really against a bad actor that owned the home prior, is unfair, but would ask for them to be waived.
So we've got to figure that one out, member of council. And so, Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor. And while I do appreciate a blighted property being, you know, made into a beautiful home for residents of Ward 3, we are seeing a pattern here. And I don't know, like, it started with a couple of homes and, or properties in my colleague's Ward 5, and there's one in Ward 3. So we want to be educated about, why aren't these liens being put to rest before we transfer the property ownership? Because I'm pretty sure you're aware, or the person who purchased these properties was aware that they had the liens, but why aren't they being satisfied before?
So when they first buy the house at foreclosure, they're not always aware of those liens. Particularly farther back in time, there's a certain time where they become aware of them. And in this case, we've now set up a process. Obviously, we had this meeting. My firm had a conversation, and I've made the representation to Councilman Creer. I made it, I've made it to yourself and to Councilman Coffin before, that we would never bring anybody that didn't currently own the property after this. They just have a long history of done it. This would not be the first time that the council has acted on a home that they were involved in that had already been sold and moved forward. And so they've just been used to that this process works. So they had hired a different law firm, they had hired a different consultant, and they were working in a path, the same way I would ask my clients, do trust me that we'll work you through the process the right way. And so they've been put in this situation. So what we've done, as they've come to us, is made a commitment, can we deal with these three properties, and can we move forward? And you have an absolute commitment from our client and from us, that you won't be seeing us when they don't own the property again on this. So...
Wonderful. Well, it looks beautiful. The pictures look beautiful.
This one's a tough one. But I guess I'll be consistent today as well. I don't want to be, you know, more lenient of a parent with one child than with another. So you're going to pay the $5,064 in out-of-pocket costs, and we'll go ahead and reduce those civil penalties by 75%.
And that's your motion?
That's my motion, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. Okay. Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. And also in a 30, payment within 30 days, which is the policy of...
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
As soon as we have clarification from the city, they'll be paid immediately.
Thank you.
The total will be $9,939.
And Councilman Krier?
9,939.
9,939.
Okay, and posted, that motion carries.
9,939.
Okay. You're all right with that, because we just voted yes unanimously. Mr. Sullivan, you're in agreement for your client?
Pardon?
You're in agreement to pay that in 30 days?
They will have it paid in 30 days.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to agenda items 75 through 77. May be considered one motion, one vote. They're considered routine, non-public, public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request that that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Are you all okay with it, council? Okay. Number 75, MOD 76339, applicant owner KB Holman v. Acquisition LLC. Request for a major modification of the Town Center land use plan from MC-TC Montecito Town Center to UCTC Urban Center Mixed-Use Town Center on 2.96 acre park portion of 5.19 acres generally located east of Grand Montecito Parkway on the west side of Doe Brook Trail alignment. And related item 76, VAC 76340, on a request for a petition to vacate public right-of-way, public drainage, public utility, and patneasements generally located east of Grand Montecito Parkway on the west side of Oso Blanca Road, Ward 6. Councilwoman Mayor Protem Fiori. Number 77, RQR 76626, applicant owner Hellfire Media LLC and a required review of an approved special use permit. SUP 61802 for an existing 10,248 square foot museum art display or art sales private use at 600 East Charleston Boulevard, PR professional office and parking zone, Ward 3. Councilwoman Diaz. Staff recommends approval on all items, and Planning Commission recommends approval on items number 75 and 76, which are public hearings that I declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on that 75 or 76? I will close the public hearings. Mayor Protem may have a motion for the one motion, one vote, items 75 through 77.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the one motion, one vote for the portion of this agenda.
Thank you very much. Please vote. There's a motion on those items, and please post. And those carry unanimously. Okay, agenda items 78 through 82, VAR 75819, related item. VAR 75820, on a request for variance to allow residential buildings to have a height of three stories where two stories maximum allowed on lots 1 and 2 respectively of a two-lot proposed residential subdivision. Agenda item 80, VAR 75821, on a request for variance to allow a 47-foot wide access control gate where 50 feet is required to allow sidewalks on one side where sidewalks on both sides are required and to allow a connectivity ratio of 1.00 where 1.30 is required on 2.14 acres on the north side of Bonanza Road approximately 1,550 feet east of Decatur Boulevard, R2 medium-low density residential zone. Number 81, SDR 75822, on a request for a site development plan or review proposed 18-unit residential subdivision. And agenda item 82, TMP 75823, on a request for tentative map for a three-lot residential subdivision. The applicant owner is SKU SALC on 2.14 acres, north side of Bonanza Road, approximately 1,550 feet east of Decatur Boulevard, R2 medium-low residential density zone. The Planning Commission staff recommend denial on all items. These are in Ward 5 with Councilman Krier and are public hearings which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm John Hamilton, and with the owner, Chaba.
In your name, sir?
Chaba Meisberger, representing SKU USA, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, just real quick, before they could start it, just for point of clarification. I know that there've been some amendments and some changes from a neighborhood meeting that has been had, and staff has taken their denial recommendation to approval recommendation, just for the record, before they could start it. And then, I'm sure they'll talk about the different changes that'll take place.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Krier for his suggestion to have a neighborhood meeting. We, I think Chaba and I were a little bit both surprised that there was a lot of misinformation. But we feel we had, we had a nice neighborhood meeting where we garnered some support for our project, and that is good. As, and in communication with the neighbors, we were able to put to rest one of the misinformation items that we are not building three-story units at 35 feet. We are certainly doing two-story units at less than 26 feet. I think that was a major issue of contention. The other item that we did commit to in this neighborhood meeting in order to bring concerns of privacy down was to eliminate our rear balconies. So, the rear balconies, I saw the exhibit flash on the screen here. That was an incorrect one. Planning does have an updated elevation exhibit to show that the rear balconies have been removed. Another item of interest is that many of the neighbors were not aware that we were building a redundancy wall adjacent to the existing wall that is only six feet. There is an elevation difference where their site is generally variable, but on average, maybe three feet lower than our site. So, that six, existing six-foot wall would only give us a three-foot screen wall for our site. So, many were unaware that we are building another redundancy wall adjacent to that one to further...
Without a gap between?
Yes, there will be like a four-inch gap. That's typical, usually the four-inch gap. And then, you would put a cap between the two walls to prevent debris and other, well, just debris going in between. So, and then also to make further, to further address the privacy concerns, we've, we are making the offer of having a nine-foot wall. So, that's what we would like to have on our site, is a three-foot wall with a six-foot screen wall on top. So, as it stands now, we are compliant with all zoning requirements and, except for the item of the variance on our security gates, which in my opinion, I do not recollect opposition on our gates, because the major issue was privacy. If I'm mistaken, I do apologize. But I do know that some residents received our gates well because it will further add protection from others trespassing through our site over the rear wall into their, to their private backyards. So, in order to do that, the variance that we are asking for, well, first, we're asking for the variance application 75819 and 75820 to be withdrawn, as they are not applicable. And we are requesting approval for a, for our gated community where 50 feet width is required, but our lot's only 47 and a half feet wide. And then, to accommodate a first response fire prevention, when you consider that we need a minimum 20-foot width, and then you have the little landscape island for the bell box, another 20 feet, it was, to make that work, was to eliminate sidewalk on just one side of the street. Actually, it's not the complete elimination. I have a site plan. What it is, is that we will have sidewalk on both sides of the street in this exhibit, on both sides, except for that the sidewalk will, the sidewalk will come down one end and then down on the other end over here. So, we do have continuity to the public right-of-way for, for public access. So, with that being said, we're respectfully asking for approval of our variance application and approval of our site plan, and then by and turn, approval of our tentative map. And again, thank you, Councilman, for your recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Let's turn it over to Mr. Summerfield, please.
Madam Mayor, good afternoon. So, staff, as Councilman Krier had indicated and as the applicant has indicated, staff has received revised plans as of May 7th. And as of, I believe, yesterday, we actually had an additional piece of revised plan. Then eliminate the need for variances, VAR 819 and VAR 75820. I'm gonna differ with the applicant. Instead of withdrawing those, those should be stricken as they're no longer applicable applications, which sought to have three-story building heights. And as such, staff requested that those items, as I said, be stricken today. The subject site is a flag lot, as you can see on the overhead, and the, which does impede the proper configuration for a gate. They can't address connectivity because of the existing development patterns around them. So, with that, staff can support the variance request for the gate and the connectivity ratio. As such, staff is recommending approval of the site development review and tentative map and this remaining variance. Staff would like to make one amendment to condition number three on the SDR at the time of the motion, if there is a motion to approve that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is public hearing on these items. So, knowing the recommendation of staff, as just said, the recommendation to strike 78 and 79. But it is public hearing. Please come up to the microphone if you just step aside and make your, tell us your name.
Good morning. Mayor Goodman and council members, like your new haircut, and welcome to the AARP Club.
Your name first.
Kimberly Jones. I'm Kimberly Jones. On this, let me pull this out. They had said that most of the community had agreed with this building being built. And we had a meeting in the middle of the street. It was walkers, wheelchairs. Everybody was in the street last night. I'm trying to find this. Where is this? Where does this go? Oh, he's in it. Okay. I wanted them to see this. This one? Yeah. No, I want them to move that, so.
Yes. Oh, I see.
So, yesterday, I collected signatures. I went from door to door personally because most of the residents are either seniors or they're working people. I have all the signatures from...
Yes.
Mr. Napoleon got the signatures from his house all the way down to the end of his block. No one agreed. I got the signatures from where he left off, all the way to the end of my block. No one agreed. Mr. Franklin brought over 100 signatures in this morning and dropped them off because he was early, dropped the signatures off. Everyone disagreed with this building. Once again, I have told everyone that this is a safety issue. If you understand, this is one way in, and this will be one way out, which we will have to deal with, with the people on the wall, which is the retainer wall they're talking about. We have a wall now on 5-5. I can look straight over the wall. So, if you build another wall, which is nine feet or 12 feet, then we will be closed in. It's like we're gonna be closed in because there's a different elevation. Also, we will have to, I've even thought about the, they say they need 50 feet to come in on the, on the emergency vehicles. Well, they won't have 50 feet if they put up the wall, which takes away six inches. If they put up the walkway, which takes another 12 inches. So, a fire truck will not be able to get in there. It will only be one-way traffic. So, every time if someone calls the ambulance, we have to hear the ambulance come through the back of our door. We have to hear the trash truck, which is 80 tons, no, 80,000 pounds, and a fire truck, which is 52,000 pounds. Eventually, the ground will go uneven because it's only one way in and one way out. The driveway will eventually shift, which our backyards will then have cracks, and they will decrease because of the weight of the emergency vehicles. Also, if we allow them to build behind our homes, every time they have company, we have to deal with their company coming in or out. Also, there's no privacy. It's two-way. So, also, they were talking about building two walls on each side of the entrance, which is very, is a blind spot. Because if you build two walls coming down to block against the church and our things, some type of crime could happen between the driveway and them coming back. So, it's a very bad idea. Say if you have a child walking home, who knows who's between the beginning of the driveway until they get to the end of the complex. Anybody can just hide out there. If you have two people that are in that blind spot that they have, I could actually take my foot and push somebody over and hush them over the wall. Also, I have the signatures here, and no one, no one, we even went inside the greens. No one agreed to it. I don't understand. Every time they come, they say, oh, we have the community's response to, that they're with it. I don't see nobody here. Nobody see, everybody that came this morning, most of them had to return the word. They didn't agree with it. I have their signatures and their phone numbers. Also...
If you all submit those to our city clerk for the record?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
And Mr. Franklin turned in some this morning.
Okay. Yes. Bingham? Bingham, Davis? Bingham? Frank, right.
So, once again, if they build the sidewalk and a retainer wall, it would take away from the 50-inch opening they say they have for fire trucks and emergency vehicles. That won't be true. Also, they have a space on Decatur. Why don't you go up over Decatur where there's a big lot over there? My suggestion to you is return, it's not, it's not safe. It's not sufficient enough. Return the property back to the church. Let them build a vocational center or playground for the kids. This is a bit too much. I think it's just not conducive, and it's not safe for our community. And then, it would also downgrade our property value, as I said. Because if you told me that you, I have to pass eight houses, if you count from the driveway, eight houses all the way back to get to my house, who wants to buy or live in a complex where you have to pass eight houses to get to your own and disturb your neighbors? Because it's gonna be a noise effective, and it's really gonna be, it's gonna downgrade my property value, which I'm concerned about. So, I'm asking everyone to please vote against this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Council.
And, sir, are you John Napoleon?
Mr. Napoleon.
Wonderful. Did you wanna add anything to Mr. Jones' comments?
Not very much, but I do want to not step on anything at all that Kim Jones said. Only repeating, like her, I've spoken to every one of my neighbors, and I couldn't find one that was supportive. Those that are not working or can find the time in their day to be here was here. Some of them had to leave eventually because they couldn't wait any longer. More than the physical technicalities that need to be addressed, there are a bunch of emotional realities. The privacy thing, in my opinion, is still not solved because a two-story house in back of my swimming pool looks over even a nine-wall fence or a nine-foot wall into my backyard. I must admit that, okay, I've got a couple of grandkids that are 26 and 30, and occasionally, they like to have their friends come over, and they, they do not see the need for having bathing suits. I really don't need to be worried about the privacy. Even without the balconies, somebody can look out their back window and... somebody can look out their back window and, you know, when I was 19 years old, that is exactly where I would be if I knew the neighbors were swimming.
Thank you.
So there's a privacy issue that's a very big one for me. There's also the kids that are using the streets out at the school. True, there's only 19 units, assuming that there's as many as two cars per unit, or it's 18 units. I think there's a safety problem.
Thank you.
So I strongly recommend that it not receive approval because we are real neighbors. We're not hypothetical that, oh, maybe this will happen or maybe something. It's what is on the ground today.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Sir, your name, please?
Vince Herrera.
Okay, how are you?
Do you remember me?
Yes, I do.
How's Oscar?
He's doing well. How are you doing?
Getting older every year. I'd just like to say a few words. I was here before they started with the project and it was turned down. I've lived here for over 25 years. I'm one of the original homeowners. And if we don't let them build, somebody else will. And I've talked to them several times. They explained different options. Councilman, have you gone by and looked at the property? Have you seen what you're going to do?
I'm very familiar with the property.
Okay, so you know what we're talking about then?
Of course.
You're talking about the high school in front and the Mormon church. Now, what they propose are houses, are homes that you're going to buy them. He's going to live in one. When you buy something, you take responsibility to maintain it. And from what I hear, he's going to use quality merchandise. He's going to landscape it. And I feel comfortable with him getting permission to do it. Because, Mayor, I know you want to go home and have a cocktail with Oscar, but...
You know my husband too well.
It's still not happy hour time, not till 4:00. But it's important that you let people have a vision. And he's going to live there. He's building quality. He's got the experience. I know the people are probably going to kill me because I... But if he doesn't do it, somebody else will. Earlier, I was here at 8:00 this morning. So I've heard all day long that how big Vegas is going, how it's a chance to do something. This man who owns it, not Minneapolis, what a beautiful story, that he give up. This is what America's about. So I think you should reconsider and let them go ahead and do their project. Because I tell you what, if they don't do it, somebody else will. And it may be not to our liking. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Are you Phil Marina Georgina?
Yeah.
But you have to repeat it anyway, please. There's a microphone right in front of you and then you can put that in the center, under the center mic. Over for -- there you go.
Okay.
But you have to be in front of a microphone to speak, please. And your name.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Your honor, I want to say that I appreciate...
Starting off with your name, please.
My name is Phil Moreno Georgieva.
Good.
And I want to add something missing. Okay, I was on the previous meeting, not on the meetings before, and most of the people were against the project. Only a few people mentioned that they agree on one-story community to be built there. And I appreciate the effort for the owners to change the project from three-story to two-story building. But still is going to affect us. First of all, these notices that we received for the previous meeting were the only one that we received. And nobody -- and all the neighbors were not aware about this meeting. They got confused. And when I talked to them, they didn't know where the meeting is going to be. And they were waiting for another card, so to participate on this meeting. So my -- also, my concern is also that if you allow this to be built, this community, there's going to be a big traffic of building materials through this gate. Also, because of the elevation, maybe this is going to damage the foundation of our houses, which are on the right side. And they're at least five feet below is the difference between the elevation. We definitely, if you agree, we definitely have to have a higher wall. But they -- the owners proposed the sidewalk to be on the side, on the right side. And it's so easy to jump, no matter how high is the wall. So if you ever approve this project, they -- we're not supposed to have a sidewalk close to the wall on the right side because anybody can jump and we are not protected at all. Also, as I said, maybe we have to receive another cards and another meeting so we can -- so all the people can really participate. Because most of them wasn't aware at all. On the previous meeting, people mentioned the traffic, no privacy, and all the stuff that, you know, the other neighbors already discussed. Me, I'm very concerned and I haven't slept last night. You can see by the way I look and by the way I talk, I'm really concerned and I really hope you are not going to approve this project because it's against, you know, against this tight, steep path has no way to be controlled and to be watched, even if they built two walls nine feet high, as they said. It's still hard to be -- how can I say? To be monitorized. And anybody plus that all these 18 apartments, we're going to have so many people that we have no idea. They can jump. They can watch from their apartments, our backyards. And it's really, really our concern, you know.
Thank you.
That's all I can add to this. Maybe we need to have, again, hearing from the rest of the neighbors who wasn't aware at all. And you have signatures of the other people from the year of 2014. With this short notice, they didn't -- nobody was able to check what the people thinking about this.
Thank you for coming and staying with us. And is there anyone else wishing to be heard from the public? I will close the public comment at this point.
Did you want me to respond to any of those comments?
Is there anything that you feel is pertinent?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward.
Just briefly, we are not proposing extensions of wall within the pole of this lot. The nine-foot wall is along the rear, not along these sides. I think I had heard that there was a concern about extending these walls here. And then the prior gentle lady here had referred to the sidewalk. That's a code requirement. We're asking, actually asking for a waiver of the sidewalk. So, okay, so that's just clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And anything else you wanted to add?
I'd just like to -- I'm sorry. I'd just like to add to it that prior to doing these plans and drawings, we had a meeting with the city officials, with the fire department before we put everything on the map. Just wanted to add this. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless it's something new, because we don't want to get in an argument.
It is something new.
Okay.
So you're telling me that you're not going to put a retainer wall down here? So you're not going to build the wall?
There's an existing wall there. No.
So the existing wall that's there, I can stand and look over it?
Okay.
So that means you could just walk past and do this? Because that's how it is now.
That's how it is now. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's -- anything more, Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, the only clarification I would make, I heard a number of mentions of apartments. These are not apartments. These are being mapped as single-family residents. Obviously, they're attached. But these will be owner-occupied per the tentative map that's before you today.
Correct. Owner-occupied. Okay. Now, let's go and council -- anybody in council wanting to have a little input here? No desire. Okay, there you go, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure how we want to, from a housekeeping item, if we want to strike 78 and 79 to start this off and then go into the conversation for the other ones. That would be improper, right?
I believe so, yes. Madame Mayor, yes. If you want to strike those two, and I think you can do that together because it's just a strike, and then go into a discussion on the other three items.
Okay. Now, one of the things is that we're going to have a discussion. I'm not sure if the other items are going to get approved or not. And so I -- we're wondering if they don't get approved.
Well, why don't we get rid of 70?
Yeah, I'm saying that. Just get rid of it.
Let's do that, then you're right.
That would be my suggestion. However, if you have any concern that this needs to continue to be a package because of any changes that might be coming out of your discussion, where a variance may still need to be required, maybe you have your discussion and then dispose of the applications as appropriate after that.
That's what I was wondering, because it might be an opportunity to table something in.
Well, and two, if I might add, Councilman, if you go back to see if you can have more meetings with residents and get something done, then I would definitely hold those two, too, because...
Yeah, that's what I was saying. So, guys, I really appreciate you guys coming in and meeting with me, number one. You seem like very upstanding gentlemen who are trying to build a great project and do something good. And I can really respect that. The challenge is that, and another challenge is that you have a very unique lot. Unique lot in size, unique lot where in proximity it is. You know, this neighborhood's been there a long time, ever since I was a kid. I'll be 50 tomorrow. And I know a lot of people that live in that neighborhood, you know, from not just who live around the border area, but along Washington, along Valley View, you know, all throughout there. And I've grown up with them. And there is a general consensus that the community does not want this project. And so, you know, one of the challenges that you have is the two stories, I think, is really daunting. I had asked through staff if there was a way to repurpose the buildings that go along the backside of it, the two stories, and move it towards the car dealership and also the two stories towards the church, and then make the one stories around the backside. And I was told that that was not possible based off of your design. Is that valid? Because one of the main issues is that the two stories is...
We would have to look at the square footage and things of that.
Yeah. So I was under an impression that I was told by my staff that you were reached out and that was the case, that you guys couldn't do that.
No, we're not interested in single-story because this is a tough site as it is.
Yep. Yep, I get you.
And so it's very, very difficult.
I get you. But to come in and infringe on those homes that have been there for such a long time, I can respect that. And I, if, you know, look, I've lived in my house since 1970s, since I was born. And if someone came in and wanted to build looking out over us, I know that my neighbors, my parents would have gone ballistic and I would as well. And so I want you to build something and I want you to do something there. But I don't think that with this particular project that we can improve the SDR for the two stories that's there. Because it's just, it is, it's infringing on the others' property that's there right now. And so I want to kind of give you an option to either, you can table this to another date, maybe you can figure out something else. So you don't have to, if we deny it, then you won't be able to come back and you have to reapply within a year. You wouldn't have to be able to reapply in a year to come back in front of this council. If we tabled it, then you can go back and come back at a later date to figure out if you've worked something out. Is that accurate, Mr. Summerfield?
Yes, sir. If we table these items, then they, if they need to make adjustments, that will give us an opportunity. If there's a re-notification that we need to do because the project changes significantly from what was published, that'll give us an opportunity to re-notice it. It would not generate any new application fees. And because it would still be a live application, there's no concerns with the cool-off period if an application is denied.
So I'm going to give you that option. I know it's not what you want to hear, but that is an option. Do you understand?
Yes, I would take that option, sir.
The table?
Yes.
Okay, so...
That to redesign maybe the site, do single stories where you feel that single story needed.
Yeah. And look, and I apologize for interrupting you. That's my fault.
No, sir. Just go ahead, sir.
Okay, I apologize. I just think that there's a way to work. I'm hopeful there's a way to work with the neighbors to find a solution to this issue. And plus, look, you got to make a, you know, you got to understand something. To neighbors, I'm going to say this to you, is that, look, this piece of land property has been abandoned for a long time, as far back as I've ever known it's been abandoned. You know, we need to get more residents in our community. And I think that if you've got some people that are, that seem like good, upstanding people that want to build something nice, then there has to be some compromise there. And so I urge you to work with these gentlemen in order to find something that would be a good solution for that land. And so why don't we make a recommendation to table this for a little bit, and then we'll bring it back once we have the ability? What's the timeframe we can table this, Mr. Summerfield?
Sir, so typically, we don't table more than six months. So we don't do a time certain here.
Right.
But that would be the ask, is that the applicant work with my staff and work with the neighbors. And then once they feel comfortable that they've reached a compromise, it's in line with what you're, what you've discussed today, then we will work with them to get the items re-agendized.
Yep.
And any re-notification that needs to occur. Because it's tabled, we will have to re-notice, period, even if it stayed the exact same way it is now. But we'll work to make sure that we have proper notification to everybody as well.
That's fine. Then I'm not going to strike 78 or 79, just leave it as it is. So can I do this all in one motion or do I have to do it individually? Okay, great. And you're fine with that? Probably within six months, you go back and work and figure, see if you can come back with a project?
Yes, yes.
That would be great. Thank you guys very much for that. So I'm going to make a motion, unless there's other comment.
No, we're cool.
Great, thank you. I'm going to ask my peers to make a motion to table items 78, 79, 80, 81, and 82.
So that leaves an open window timewise, but you're also instructing them to go back and have meetings.
Please.
And you, of course, being the great facilitator.
Yes, we love it.
Okay. So there's a motion to table 78 through 82. So please vote and please post.
And I want to thank the neighbors for coming out and voicing your voice as well. And I also want to thank the applicants for coming out and working with them.
Great. Thank you very much. Then that motion, except for Councilman Creer, you need to vote. Uh-huh. And now we will post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to agenda, item 83. And I am going to be recusing myself. And 83 and 84, I'm going to turn this over to Mayor Protem. And you go right ahead, please. Okay, well, you can say that without prejudice.
SUP 75722, applicant CW Nevada, owner El Sham, 24 Fremont Properties LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 3,600-square-foot marijuana dispensary use in a portion of the 2424 South Las Vegas Boulevard, C2, general commercially zoned in Ward 3 Diaz's. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Is the applicant present?
And I have to interject here. Whoops, sorry. I have been advised by council, as boring as this is, every time we bring up anything to do with marijuana, I will abstain from voting on any issue to do with any part of medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, marijuana at large, because one of my sons involved in the industry. So back to you, Will, please. Pardon my interruption.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so...
The applicant.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, and Mayor, I assume that includes cannabis as well, probably, right?
Anything, just M, anything, count them.
George Garcia, 1055 Whitney Ryan Drive, Suite 210. And along with me here is Dr. Batty, if you will, for the record.
Pejman Batty, 2700 South Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite 2709.
I'm sorry, sir, can you spell your name for the record? Thank you.
So, so with that, let me continue then, and basically say that, first off, we stand before you today with a typical special use permit application for an existing dispensary licenses that are already on Third Street that the doctor already has, and will basically relocate the recreational license here, but this is a special use permit case. And so, to the extent that you're all familiar, I think, with the special use permit requirements of the code, and particularly for dispensaries. And so, there are a number of requirements that are spelled out in the code and statutes that basically we, we are required to comply with. Those 12 requirements have been provided to you by staff, and finding that we meet all those, the Planning Commission also recommended that we meet those unanimously, of those able to vote. So we stand here before you, ready with the, having met all the requirements of the city, and I understand there are probably some people here to speak on the matter, and then, if you will, we'd be like to come back and address the issues that are raised, because at this point, as far as, as far as we know, we're in full compliance with all the cities' and state requirements.
Thank you. Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, the subject site complies with all minimum distance separations as set forth in Title 1912, and therefore, the use can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner within the surrounding existing uses located within the shopping center. As such, staff recommends approval of the proposed use subject to conditions. There was some questions at briefings yesterday, so at this time, I will hand this presentation over to Deputy Planning Director McElhone, who has some additional information for you.
Due to the recent legislative changes, the only license that can exist at this site right now is for retail recreational marijuana. Medical marijuana may not exist at this site because of the 1,500-foot un-distant separation from gaming. I should note that the applicant has an existing location, which is medical and retail, so he could only move the retail marijuana portion of his license. I also should note that in the recent legislative change, that he is only allowed to do that up until the November deadline, so we'd have to move that retail recreational license, I believe it's before November 23rd of 2019. Thank you.
Okay, so just to clarify, you're saying on the new legislation, the medical marijuana portion, what was the effective date per the state?
The effective date, I believe it was effective immediately, or it was July 1st of 2019. The reason why the retail or recreational is not in effect yet is because of the ballot initiative. The ballot initiative could not be changed until it had been voted on for three years. So that three years is up in November. That's why it doesn't affect the recreational portion with the recent legislative change.
Okay, as we're discussing this, just please check that it's not July 1st, 2020.
You mean for medical?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so, so this is open for the public hearing. Are you Pastor Jerry Page?
No, I am.
Oh, you are?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have your card.
Okay, thank you. I am Pastor Jerry L. Page, and I'm from Greater Faith Baptist Church. I just want to come on their behalf, when they first moved into the neighborhood, and they actually came in and sat down with the community, and we had several different meetings, and they actually supported us, and not only did they support us, they actually came in and did some work in the community that we are in to show their support, even though they were setting up a marijuana spencer. But I really appreciate all the work that they have done and how they helped us, so I just wanted to come on their behalf and give them my support and let you know that. They did come in, and they stood on their word, and they did an outstanding job.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem, members of the council. My name is Jeff Silver. I'm an attorney with the Dickinson Wright Law Firm, and I'm counsel today for the Nevada Resort Association. I would just like to acknowledge the presence in the audience today of Virginia Valentine, the president of the association, and there are obviously other members of the association that wish to individually address you, so I'm going to try and keep my remarks very brief. The map that you see before you is essentially the original map, but I have colored it in. And the reason I colored it in is because these drawings here demonstrate the location of non-restricted gaming facilities. This is the Sahara Hotel SLS, and of course, this is the Stratosphere. And the pink location is the festival grounds, the concert grounds for, owned by MGM. So essentially, we have members of the Nevada Resort Association that have a great interest in this location. Now, as I understand it from the previous comments, there is going to be a movement of the, the location, the retail recreational location only, so therefore, there will, there will still be a canopy location on Third Street that will service the medical marijuana clientele. I was not aware of the fact that they were not moving both, but in the, having that clarified, it doesn't really make a difference in terms of the presentation today, because the yellow road that goes through this location, through this site, is Las Vegas Boulevard, Las Vegas Strip, as we refer to it. And I know that the city and the county have always had some disagreement as to how long the strip is, but the strip, to me, is any place where non-restricted gaming is located, and that means that it's taking it all the way past the Stratosphere Hotel, and then split up to head downtown. This is what we're trying to protect. The Resort Association is also trying to protect the integrity of AB 533, which was intended to affirm and reaffirm the 1,500-foot separation between medical and recreational facilities and the, the resort industry. And they have very good reasons for doing that, because obviously, it's still a federal crime. The important thing is that, you know, when Mr. Garcia referred to this as, as being a typical special use permit application, it is by no means a typical application. And a special use permit is not something that you should take lightly, and I know you don't, but it is a situation where you review the particular circumstances of any location, and you decide whether or not those circumstances and the surrounding businesses and the surrounding nature of the area is compatible to issue that special use permit. If it were not a special permit, then it would just be a mail-it-in and be done with it. In this particular case, the special circumstances are this: We don't want a cannabis corridor on the Yellow Brick Road heading downtown. And we already have what looks like to me to be a pretty heavy concentration of marijuana establishments. The items in green are the proposed applicant, and then, of course, you have the Essence dispensary and the Relief dispensary located in close proximity. This is a concentration which would give the wrong impression, I believe, to the tourists that visit here, and especially those who traverse the Bonanza Gift Shop. These are the people who are going to be walking into this location and then potentially using the, the products as they, as they walk out. And Captain Chavez from the Metropolitan Police Department will be here in a moment to address those kinds of concerns. So this is what we have here on the property. It's a sign that says, "Dispensary 200 feet away." This is, they're referring to the Relief dispensary located at Sahara and Paradise. So, obviously, if someone comes to this location, all they have to do is walk across the street 200 feet, and they can get to another dispensary. This is another shot of the Bonanza Gift Shop area, and I pointed out the location of the Essence dispensary, which is right directly across the street from this proposed location. And, you know, when you have a, a medical marijuana facility, if you're in an industrial area or someplace like that, people drive to it, they get the goods that they need for their pain, or the other purposes that they, they use that for medically, and then they drive home or wherever. When you go to a recreational location, and this is what we found downtown, what we found is that when you open up a packaged liquor store downtown, they immediately take the liquor and use it under the canopy at the Fremont Street Experience, and that's the kind of concern that we have here with this location. Somebody's going to buy it here, walk out, use it in the parking lot, or head over to the SLS Sahara, or to the Stratosphere, and use the product, because that's the intent of having it there. And when you get to the festival grounds with the MGM, you know that this is going to be a prime location. So for business purposes, this applicant has decided to separate their two licenses and move them to this location, move one of them to this location. Finally, I would just like to say, when you saw the pictures in the file, they were cut off right here, showing where the location is. I went over there and took this picture, and one of the main products of this gift shop is kids' goods. And within 10 feet of that door into the entrance of the kids' area shop would be the door to the marijuana shop. And so, it seems to me that the, the nature of the neighborhood, the, the existence of the concentration of marijuana facilities nearby that are capable of serving the need, we don't need another. There were 94 protest letters that were sent in on this application, and one of them, I thought, was very poignant. It just said one word: Really? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers. Sean Higgins, Chief Legal Officer for Golden Entertainment, operator of the Strat, 6595 South Jones. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak here. I'm, I, first off, I want to say something. Both personally and as a company, we're not opposed to medical or recreational marijuana. They were passed, I was involved in both. I was involved in numerous applications before going back into the private sector and into the gaming world. What we're opposed to is this location. This location, regardless of what staff will say as to the compatibility and appropriateness, that's because this is zoned appropriately. That's what that means. That's all it means. The fact is, we are 715 to 18 feet away from this. The Strat, we have already put over $65 million, since we purchased it a year and a half ago, into it. We have another $100 million to put into it. We are trying to revitalize this whole corridor. We are working with the city, with the new city archway right on our property, which is going to be the grand entrance to the city of Las Vegas. We're doing all those things, and we are vehemently opposed to putting a marijuana establishment, especially recreational, at the gateway to the city of Las Vegas. Additionally, we've been working with the city, talking with city, county, and with RTC. You're going to have a pedestrian bridge at the corner there, going all the way around. Well, guess where it's going to drop you down? Right into a medical marijuana facility. State law, Section 2.16.3, took effect immediately upon passage and approval, and that was, you can't move a medical marijuana license. And I want this council to hear this: The only reason the entire law didn't take effect, and we wouldn't even be sitting, standing here today, is because you can't change an initiative for a three-year period. We would not be standing here today, having this discussion, if the legislature had had the opportunity to change that law before the three years. So please, take that into consideration. The state legislature looked, said you shouldn't have marijuana uses within 1,500 feet of a non-restricted licensee. Additionally, when the city was handing out licenses, one of their main criteria was concentration of licenses, and this goes back to what Mr. Silver said. We've got 1, 2, 3. I was there at the hearings when the city said, "We want to make sure these are equally distributed amongst the city." Well, I guess that no longer would apply if we put it here, because this will be the fourth one within less than 100, 1,000 feet from us, and the 11th one in less than a mile from our Strat location. The neighborhood around the Strat, and right here, is a challenging neighborhood. I, I invite you all, come over to the Strat with me one day, and come walk back in the naked city with me, and I'll tell you what you're going to see. You're going to see homeless problems, you're going to see vacant problems, you're going to see abandoned property problems, and I'll tell you what you're going to smell, because I will take you with my chief of security, Al Salinas, you're going to smell marijuana everywhere, including our building. We have to eject double-digit people every day. Why? Because they're smoking marijuana inside of our property, which is illegal. And the fact is, this is a tourist corridor, and every one of those tourists, especially we built the bridge, who's trying to walk from the South Strip to the North Strip, trying to reconnect us with the Rest Strip, is going to have to walk through that gauntlet. You may not think that's correct, but I'm telling you right now, we deal with it every single day at that property. This neighborhood is adequately served, and I would hope you would listen to, listen to the businesses around there. We're one of the largest employers in this, in this neighborhood. We are a tourist destination. We are bringing dollars in. I hope this council takes that into consideration when they vote on this matter, and I would hope you would vote no with regard to this. It is not the appropriate place, and it's not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers, for the record, Andrew Dis, Vice President of Government Affairs for Morello Gaming, which owns and operates the SLS, soon to be Sahara, again later this year. We, too, are opposed to this new dispensary going into this location. It's kitty-corner across the street from us, and as Mr. Higgins alluded to before me, we are investing a substantial amount of capital into our property as well to revitalize the area. Within the past year, we've put in $120 million. You can see that for yourself when you walk the main floor. We're redoing all the rooms right now. It, it's a substantial investment on our part. And in a few years, when the pedestrian bridge grows, it goes in, if it's a circular design, which RTC is contemplating right now, it's going to connect all four corners of Sahara and Las Vegas Boulevard, and one of those corners would connect directly into our property. And to have direct access from our property to this newly-proposed marijuana dispensary, it, it makes us very uncomfortable based off of the fact that we are federally regulated, we're regulated by the Nevada Gaming Commission. It's, it's of great concern to us. So, the, the other thing is, the festival grounds and all the attendees that are going to be going to shows and concerts there, it's, it's already a very busy and dangerous intersection for pedestrians. Since 2018, two people have actually died at that intersection, and dozens of others have been hit and survived. And if people are going into a dispensary, the concern is that they would be using the product and then crossing the street unsafely and putting themselves at risk and other drivers. So, with that, I, I will just end my comments by saying, you know, when you go on the website, when you go online and you look at Canopy, one of the things that they have listed there is, in big letters, is they say, "Our downtown Las Vegas dispensary is ready to give you the best possible cannabis shopping experience without dealing with the hassle of the strip." They have it right there, big bold letters, right on their website. So I would ask, why are you asking to move onto Las Vegas Boulevard if you don't want to deal with the hassle of the strip? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilman Russell Rowe, here on behalf of Boyd Gaming Corporation. And as you know, Boyd Gaming has three properties downtown, around Fremont Street, on and around Fremont Street. And although we don't have a property in proximity to this location of this application, it is of concern to us as, as a member of the gaming community. We worked very hard at the legislature to get legislation passed, supported by the Dispensary Association, by the way, that included the 1,500-foot separation requirement in the legislation. And we've needed that, because we've noticed that what was intended to occur, which was, as Mr. Higgins noted, the distribution of these facilities around the city of Las Vegas is not occurring. They're congregating, understandably, from a monetary perspective, around the resort corridor, but that is a problem for the industry, and we'd hope it'd be a concern for the city of Las Vegas, particularly at the gateway to downtown. So we would, in support of the Resort Association and our gaming partners, ask that you deny this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item?
Good afternoon. I'm Captain Chavez, Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. I am the Bureau Commander for the Downtown Area Command, so I am the captain for the great city of Las Vegas. Address 621 North 9th Street for the record, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89101. First off, welcome to all the new councilmembers. I look forward to working with you, and for those of you that I work with in the past, I thank you for all your help coming up so far in the last two years that I've been in downtown. And I'm here today to speak in opposition of this new dispensary. We've talked a lot about the gateway of Las Vegas. That's what, what that is at that intersection. And I have spent a great deal of my life working for the police department to keep this neighborhood safe. The naked city is what we're talking about. The gateway. And you've seen a lot of those pictures. I don't have them with me now, but I was looking at them. The thing that they aren't showing is the neighborhoods that are right behind there. The Stupac Community Center that I spoke... The Stupac Community Center that I spent a lot of time at with the mayor for Easter, for holidays. There's a neighborhood back there that is poverty-stricken. We know that. And we are looking at placing another dispensary. So I think they said now this is going to be number six. That's troubling to me. My officers spent a great deal of time making that neighborhood safe, and when we encounter people who are undesirables that come from some of these dispensaries, it creates an enormous amount of work. I ask you all to please take in consideration the families that live behind there and live around that neighborhood, some of which are the silent minority maybe, Hispanics that are working very, very hard to improve their lives. And now here we are yet again shoving another dispensary right in front of their face. And it is the gateway. We have, and I say "we," all of us, the city of Las Vegas, have worked very hard to make this the crown jewel. As you go into Las Vegas, this is the first thing you're going to see. And I don't want that to be what people remember as they come driving into the city of Las Vegas. We shouldn't play second fiddle to anyone. This is a great city. We have done some amazing improvements along our corridor, Main Street, up and coming would be Fremont Street, Las Vegas Boulevard. Why do this? There's no need for this. I ask you all to please take all this into consideration. This is something personal for me. I have spent a great deal of my life working for the police department, and now here I am as the Bureau Commander of Downtown. I take great pride in that. And so please, take all this into consideration. We have some amazing partners that have come forward. The Stratosphere has done so much to help us. Golden Entertainment, they are great people. More importantly are the people who have to live with this every day. The rest of us go home, they have to sit there and smell this and live with it and deal with the problems. So with that, I thank you for your time and hope to continue to work with all of you in the coming future here. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Margaret Presley. I'm going to read two letters on behalf of this dispensary being approved, or the special use permit. Thank you. My address, 4006 Cottonseed Court. To the board, my name is Dan Shinofen. I was a county commissioner here in Nye County for eight years. I served on the planning commission for two years prior to that and have had the pleasure of working with Dr. Batty on many items while serving my community. He was instrumental in bringing us an urgent care facility and in building a very large 60,000-square-foot complex for HCP, which continues to offer urgent care and much-needed medical services. Dr. Batty has always been a man of his word and has worked with our board in the past to improve our community. When we started to write medical marijuana zoning and licensing codes, we met many times to discuss how best to locate and regulate them. I have faith, based on past experience, that Dr. Batty, in whatever endeavor he is involved with, will prove to be an asset to the community as well. Thank you for taking the time to consider my letter, and I hope that you will also find him a valuable community partner as I have. Sincerely, Dan Shinofen, former Nye County Commissioner and Planning Commissioner. To the members of City Council, I apologize for not being here in person, but I am attending a meeting at the National Cancer Institute. Nevertheless, I would like to say to you that Dr. Batty is one of the few remaining physicians involved in the cannabis industry, and it is so important that he be allowed to move to the most advantageous locations in order to stay competitive, thus enabling him to continue to conduct the important research needed to be undertaken in this field. The landscape of the cannabis industry has changed dramatically with large corporate ownership that have so many locations, it is and will become even more so impossible for smaller local businesses to survive. In this case, it would be disastrous to his business. For Dr. Batty's dedication to the medicinal aspects of this industry and research to continue, this absolutely means he must succeed financially. His competitors, who speak about the big corporations not being anti-competitive, are just that, and their efforts and others might prevent Dr. Batty from moving his business to a more successful location are misguided. I would encourage these council members to support this move so he can continue to be competitive. Somewhere along the line, as a community, we lost focus on what the basis was to bring to the cannabis industry in Nevada. That was for medicinal cannabis and treatment of patients. Dr. Batty embodies that initial intent, and his efforts to remain competitive should be supported. Thank you for your patience and attention. Sincerely, Nick M. Spiritos, M.D. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Mayor, I already knew. Hi, I'm Anthony Casabianca. My address is here, there, and everywhere for the moment, but I'm saying, I have no problem with marijuana, but I used to live in that area. It is, like the captain said, it's a bad area. It's real bad, and it will not make it. Plus, you have First Friday, the traffic, it would be absolutely, I would deny it.
What's your name, sir?
Anthony Casabianca.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, my address is here, there, and everywhere, like you said, for the moment.
Thank you.
But I'm not opposed to marijuana, as most will help, but it is a bad area, believe me, trust me. Like the captain said, you have Naked City, you have, it's just, it's just a...
Thank you so much, Mr. Effler. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on the item?
Molly Gabay, 2400 Las Vegas Boulevard South. I'm here today to represent the landlord. Thank you for the opportunity to do business in the city of Las Vegas. Our family has been doing business since 1997, and we'd like to continue doing business and investing in the city for years to come. In 2015, we were able to lease Bonanza Gift Shop, and in 2016, we're able to buy it for, we invested most of our money, $50 million, to buy this property. We didn't know what we were getting into when we first took over. The corner was full of riffraff and a bunch of sketchy characters. At first, we had to regain control. We had to secure the law. We had to get rid of those people, and we were, luckily, we were able to do so, to make everybody feel safe and make the area appealing for customers to come in. We replaced the Naughty Town section with Kids World and put 24-hour security, as well as upgraded the sign to have LED lights, which brightened the entire shopping center. As far as the property goes, it has the land use for dispensary, and it is not located within a distance, any distance restrictions, and it fulfills all requirements as planning has approved. The entire building is over 36,000 square feet, in which the proposed space is actually less than 10% of that. We had many different people, many different dispensary owners approach us, and they wanted to lease the space. And when Dr. Batty approached us, we liked him a lot because he was more involved with the healthcare aspect of cannabis, which we agree with. And just so you can see the look of the place that... The look of the management company is called Urban Leaf, and that's how they look. It's very professional, it's clean, it's seamless, and it goes kind of right in with our property as well. And so just a little bit about Dr. Batty, just so you can understand his care about the healthcare aspect. He developed a patented technology called Vessasorb, which allows for the CBD benefits to be five times more absorbed into the system. So he's not just about selling cannabis and making a quick buck like the rest of a lot of cannabis dispensary owners are. He's actually there caring for the people. And that's what we liked about him and why we chose to work with him. As owner and operator, we're on property every day. Our shopping center's success is our livelihood, and we would like the special use permit approved for our property, as everyone else with the, that has been approved and has had the same requirements that we meet were approved. And just to address some things that were said, for instance, about the consumption in Naked City, I mean, there were supposed to be consumption lounges, and that was struck down. You know, that was, that striking down was backed by casinos. And so if you want people to be able to consume properly in abidance with law, I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of a tough situation for them. So, you know, I suggest, you know, working with the community and, of course, keeping tourists educated with proper consumption and what the laws are, which, of course, I'm sure Dr. Batty will be doing. Okay? Any questions that you have for me?
Thank you. Thank you. No, I think, but you know, one of the things that I think is a really big valid point is you are not in any, your zoning is correct for this particular store, and plus, you are within the right amount of feet from everything. I think that's very important to consider. Thank you. So...
If I can, Mayor Protam, then respond.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. First, let me begin by saying that you heard staff say, and you also heard some of the protesters basically indicate essentially that the law says it doesn't change till November 23rd. The reason the law isn't changing is because voters approved the way the law sits today, right? Which is, we're permissible, we're allowable. And to basically try to thwart the voters' intent, what the legislature couldn't do, they're asking you to do today. What the voters said they don't want, they're asking you to do today. Basically, to undermine the voters' will and basically require something which is not required by state or local law until November 23rd. I have a letter here from Amanda Connor, basically spelling out what your own director, Mary McElone, deputy director, which is, "The amendment will take effect on November 23rd, 2019." That's regarding AB 533 and the amended sections of NRS, and I'll provide that for the record. We'd also ask that the planning commission and all the application materials for the record be included as well. The, interestingly enough, you know, one of the things that a special use permit, you always look at it, and you had before, I'm in councilman career, he wanted to hear what the neighbors had to say. That's certainly important to you as a deliberating body. What do the neighbors say? We have petitions here that I will provide you. There's over 330 signatures in the neighborhood. Dr. Batty went out and got many of these himself, so he talked to them directly. I'll provide these, copies of these to the city council. What the petition says is basically, "We, the undersides, support or do not oppose the proposed new business tenant at the corner of Las Vegas Boulevard in Sahara for marijuana dispensary. This location will serve tourists as well as the local community. The dispensary will begin the revitalization of the Gateway Shopping Center. This dispensary will boost the local economy with new customers, increase property values, creation of construction, and permanent jobs, and add a source of increased tax base for the city and state." So I think that's the will of the neighbors that are in the, whether it's in Naked City or more appropriately, part of your, your city, and we think they're our immediate neighbors. And so we think, actually, the property owner will be helping to improve the property. Dr. Batty's operation will certainly invest heavily into the property, and it'll bring tourism to the, into the city that are there, and those tourists that are there, and again, we heard this is a tourist location, one of the things tourists come to seek, along with gaming, drinking, entertainment, is marijuana, recreational marijuana, which is available to them. So that's another reason for them to be there. Why does the business want to be here now instead of on Third Street? The recreational needs to move, as was said, to be more competitive, but also because there is a huge population of tourists that travel this area every day. There is more than ample tourism to support all of the businesses. We have on, on the strip, we, area, we have multiple businesses of every type and variety. There's not just one casino. There's not just one tavern. There's not just one anything. There are multiple, in fact, there are multiples of the same businesses that are national businesses. And so we think that that's consistent with the, actually, the makeup of the, drawing tourists into the area and making it successful, and helping to invest into what is going to be the gateway into the city and be part of that. To the issue of this being sort of a, you know, I think Mr. Silver said, this is a, not a typical SUP. Well, in this respect, it's not. The requirements for a marijuana dispensary are actually much greater than a typical special use permit. The findings and requirements of the code are much greater. And then the staff's analysis and the planning commission's recommendation as well, those 12 requirements have been completely met. They've been vetted and met, and we think that's, that's really what you should be deciding is based upon that. The things they want you to do is not just compatibility zoning in those 12. There are many factors besides just mere zoning compatibility that was mentioned by Mr. Higgins. So there's quite a bit more than that when you talk about 12 requirements that are greater than the typical base special use permit in other instances. The pedestrian bridge issue, certainly, you know, when the future holds, but I don't know how one can tell that it's this marijuana dispensary versus all the others that were mentioned. If there's 11 in a mile, let alone throughout the valley, how do you know which dispensary or whether it's even legal marijuana that somebody's smoking? And how do you deal with that? That's an enforcement issue. It's how do you stop people from speeding? There are people that are going to speed. You have to have, you know, diligent law enforcement, you have to have education programs and those sort of things. And certainly, lounges would help, give people an opportunity, a place to legally smoke. And that day will come. But the, but the gaming control board and the casinos are stuck with the federal regulations they have. So I understand that they have to almost be here to defend their compliance issues that they're obligated to attend. But the state has separated itself from the federal requirements, and the, basically, the community, all of those who voted, said this is appropriate and desirable in our community. And so we have that, two pieces of mind, one at the federal level, which they have to live with, but the community is elected, and we think you're following what the voters have said they want. So that, that issue is not an issue of concentration. We have plenty of tourists. It's not an issue of following the law. The law is very clear, is it exists today, not what it's going to be on November 23rd. And we think there's an opportunity for us, in our dispensary, and all the other dispensaries essentially in this immediate area. And just to give you a sense of what that looks like, because Mr. Silver's, I think my exhibit's a little better than his, I'm biased though, but if we can go to the overhead, we can, you can see here that what we, what we have is, just in this immediate location, very close, here's the Stratosphere property here. 452 feet to the north is Blackjack Collective. That's dispensary. We already have Essence, number one, which is number one on the map here, and that's right on Las Vegas Boulevard, a dispensary there. We have Relief, number two, here, and, and actually, just go back, Essence is actually closer than we are. They're only 550 feet. Blackjack's 452, Relief, number three, or is 723, and we're 795 feet away from the closest point to Stratosphere's property. If there was, the city doesn't have a rule against concentration. They didn't adopt those rules. There was discussion, but the city didn't adopt an anti-concentration. They didn't do like Clark County and say, "No, you can't, we're not going to have these on the strip." So again, we're in compliance with the rules as they exist today. We think it would be unfair and inequitable to approve, having approved all those others, plus the 11 that are out there that were referred to, and find that somehow we're uniquely different. So I'll leave that, this exhibit for the record as well. But let me give you a sense of what the, one of those properties that faces the strip looks like. Here's Essence, and very visible, not discreet whatsoever. I mean, you can't be more, any more impactful than that. And you can see, here you can see Essence, close up in the Stratosphere looming in the And here's a nighttime shot, and this is from their own website, showing again Essence lit up at night about as brightly and in your face as you possibly could get. So there's nothing about being discreet that has occurred to date. Other dispensary locations here in these other, and we're looking at this Essence from, in other locations here, we provided to give some sense of that, and I'll leave those as well. I guess the point is, we're not, we're not, while we're on the strip in one sense, we're facing Sahara, but more importantly, we intend to be discreet. So we've offered the councilwoman's office that, as far as the signage, which is not before you, as far as the aesthetics of the design, which we've illustrated what that intends to look like, we would be glad to come back, work with staff and her office on what that design would be. And so we would certainly offer that, that condition or concession to come back before her office or whichever way she would want to do that. We'd offer, also willing to work with the other dispensaries in the city to create, with Metro, be a partner, be a partner, and let's find a way, if, if in fact, enforcement, which is the issue, is a problem, let us find a way to participate in funding... which is the issue, is a problem, let us find a way to participate in funding an officer as appropriate and proportionate as that may be, to help fund whatever efforts are necessary. It's, everybody's the landowners, it's to our benefit to keep these in a, a good standing and good form. You don't want to chase away customers. It's, to me, it's like I have heard on, you know, convenience store, well, we don't want people drinking liquor, it'll chase away all the customers. You don't want them sitting out in front of your store, or in front of your tavern or anything else. You don't want them in a grocery store having, drinking out of your, from, after they walk out of the grocery store. You have to enforce as a property manager and operator. So, we will have security there, both from property owner as well as dispensary. There'll be lots of, there's required security. So, we can work with the city and Metro, but to enhance that off property, Metro's the best capable to do that. We could assist in providing some financial mechanism and be glad to participate in doing so. So, we think that's, that's an important issue as well. So, to the extent that this is actually going to help what was called the Naked City and try to make the property improve, try to make it bring more tax dollars into the city and the state, serve the community and the tourism better, we think this is totally appropriate and consistent with the voters' will, existing state law, existing city codes, and we'd ask for your approval. And I know Pej would like to say a few words.
Mayor Goodman, Mayor Protem, and the rest of the city council members and the new members, I'm glad to be in front of you guys again. I was here five years ago, I think. Five, six? And since then, we've been very active in keeping cannabis as clean and as available for our patients as possible. I got into this for medicinal reasons. I will continue being involved in this for medicinal reasons. However, in order to be effective, we need to be able to support ourselves financially. I don't have $100 million. I don't have $140 million to ask help from the sheriff department to come and speak on my behalf. I don't have that. But I do have a one and a half year old that we live, with my wife, and we live less than half a mile away from the proposed location. Been in this town for 23 years and I've seen the city grow, and I've been part of it. We intend to be good neighbors, and we intend to help that area, my neighborhood, to thrive. And we've offered to put clinics around to help people with whatever needs that they have. Support with law enforcement locally and around the dispensaries in that area. And I'm, I'm so glad that we're here. I love our city. I'm committed to our city, and I'm asking you for your vote. Thank you.
I'd just like to add a few things. He reminded me when he showed the photo. So, in response to the billboard that was brought up by one of the attorneys, that's a third-party billboard, you know, operated by Lamar. It's not something we have control of what's advertised up there. And as well as in regards to the kids world, saying that the dispensary is right by it, we plan to move that stuff around. Merchandise doesn't stay in the same place. So, just wanted to clarify those couple items that were addressed earlier. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Anthony, you already spoke. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Have a great time. Any council members? Before I turn it over to Councilwoman Diaz? Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm going to start with Ms. Cabaye. Ms. Cabaye, can you, you're, you're currently the best, you're the owner of, or co-owner, you helped your father manage that area there. What has been the effects of the two dispensaries that are nearby your current establishment? Can you give me a, just honest, honest?
Yeah. You know, honestly, Armin's Essence, since it came over there, we didn't really have any negative effect. And that's kind of also why we considered leasing the space, because as I mentioned earlier, we had quite a few people, some of which, who opposed in writing, they wanted to lease the space. So, after a couple, you know, a couple offers, we were, we started to get interested, we paid closer attention across the street. We've even went, you know, visited those around in the area. We stayed in the lot, watched how everything kind of worked, and we had no issues with it. And that's when we started to actually consider leasing it.
And just to the points that were made here by several individuals, do you smell it nonstop around you, since there are a couple of the marijuana establishments there?
No, honestly, we don't smell it. I do also own a property a little further up IHOP, it used to be formerly IHOP. And sometimes around that area in the back where the living space is, sometimes you smell it in that area.
Okay.
But I'm not sure that those people are consumers of dispensary-bought marijuana. I don't think they have the means to, to purchase, you know, it's more expensive and stuff like that, so.
Naked City is a really rough part of the ward. I know that growing up, that's always been there, and it has continued to be a challenge for us. How do you see that affecting a potential marijuana dispensary now being right there, really close to, to that neighborhood?
Well, the particular clientele, especially like in our lease with, with Pej, they have to market more to tourists. It's not going to be to any locals or any local specials for people that live around the area. The owner of the Aztec and, and us, we're actually talking about selling that IHOP property and theirs in conjunction. And as you know, they have like a whole back area of residential properties. So, that whole thing might get sold and bought to be redeveloped, so I think that area slowly but surely will be, you know, start to get cleaned up, and people are investing in that.
And also, what are the hours of operation we're thinking about for that location?
So, we're open from 8:00 AM to midnight, sometimes 11:30. But what are, are your hours?
I think we will be equivalent at the beginning with the existing hours. I do expect that to increase. However, we will have 24-hour security. We currently have 24-hours. We have two secure, is, our security plan is a little more aggressive than most marijuana security plans currently on our Third Street. We have two guards at all times during operational hours, and then we have one floating between back and forth during non-operational hours. In that facility, our commitment has been to, is going to be, has been to have not only 24-hour coverage, but increased coverage in that area because the surrounding areas are, we don't want people smoking or having issues in, in, in our area. So, it'll be, it'll be 24-hour security. The hours of operation will be probably from 8 to 12, and most likely would increase.
This is a really hard agenda item to face on your second council meeting. Oh, who has a question? You have, oh, then Councilwoman Knutson, I was going to dub you the birthday boy.
To Mr. Summerfield and the staff, I'm just curious if the city has ever considered any restrictions on the concentration of cannabis dispensaries?
Through you, Madam Mayor Protem. So, that is a policy decision of the city council, and at this time, there is no distance separation between like uses. I think that was a part of the conversation when we began working on our marijuana regulations, but that did not end up being a part of the distance separations that this council has adopted to take that part into account, at least not at the zoning control. Obviously, that is completely at the discretion of the council. If they feel that there's a particular area that's oversaturated, then they can indicate that that's just not compatible for another such use.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Diaz, if you're comfortable. I, I just wanted to say, this is a very complicated issue, and, and all of my time as a city council member, the most complicated, I would have to say. But I, I wanted to say that, if it's okay, I wish you were coming to Ward 1, and I, I know there's a few items in the coming agendas that, that'll be up, and equally, they'll be controversial, because there's always people that have very strong feelings on this particular issue. I think that the city, in my, in my perspective, it sounds like you followed all the rules that the city has, has offered, the guidelines that have been set forth. And given the presentation we heard earlier in the RDA meeting, which is not relevant, but it was, it was discussing about the vacancy rate in downtown and how many office buildings we have empty. And the fact that you're willing to come into the downtown, to me, is, is something to consider. And so, I'm grateful for that opportunity. That being said, this is a very complicated issue, and the issues that may come out of whatever the decision of our Councilwoman Diaz, I think it's important that I want to put on the record that I've, I've been very clear and transparent, because this is a very controversial issue. And my, my feeling is that, that it's important to be transparent. And so, in every conversation, I've said the same thing, is that I support Councilwoman Diaz and her decision and what she makes today, and I don't know what decisions she'll make, but I support the decision that she'll make. And, and also that, from a city perspective, I think it's important that we think through how challenging it is to, to do business if we're different than the county in North Las Vegas and Henderson. And if there was interest from the, the Nevada Resorts Association or from the cannabis industry, that is something that I would really like to work on, is establishing some, some level of consistency in how we regulate from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. And obviously, there'll be changes with the cannabis board, but I think there's, there's some level of, of importance in setting the record straight around what's, what's appropriate within the city of Las Vegas as it relates to being right next to the county as well. So, like I said, I wish you were coming into Ward 1. Over and over again, in my, in my efforts to learn about the ward, I heard incredible support for the cannabis industry. I also heard requests over and over again for jobs, and the fact that we're creating more jobs is, is, is important to me. So, if I could recruit you to come into Ward 1, I, I would, I would do that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Knutson. Before I turn it over, I will say that depending upon, you know, the councilwoman's decision, I will support your decision. We have Councilwoman Seaman and Councilwoman Anthony. Did you want to say?
Thank you. First of all, Councilwoman Diaz, this is, I mean, there's good arguments on both sides, but I'm, let me tell you what, what I'm thinking of and what, what I'm hearing and kind of how I, I think I'm going to vote on this is, first of all, I'm, I, I'm pretty well-known for taking into consideration the neighbors first. They were there first. I need to listen to what they have to say. And with all due respect on your, your petition here, and I like you, George, you're a good man, but I just looked at the first couple of pages, and we got 3900 Mountain Vista, 3201 South Mojave, East Bonanza, 8th Street. So, these aren't neighbors. I don't know who filled these out. I don't know where these were located, but these aren't the people that live in the neighborhood. They're just, somehow they got filled out, and they're, they're not representative of the people that are in that area. So, the people that, the people that are in that area are, are the, is the gaming industry. And they're our number one industry in Southern Nevada. They are our number one employer, and whenever they come up and say that they're worried about something affecting their business, I have to listen to that, because it affects a lot of people. So, they're the neighbors, and they're against this project. Second of all, Captain Chavez in the back, I worked with him when I was at Metro, he's a man of integrity, and he's a pretty smart guy. And if he comes up here and says that having another dispensary in that particular area when there's already three or four of them, and that's going to cause him issues when it comes to policing, I have to listen to that. That's very important. And third of all, I mean, the, we, we want to make marijuana places available for people. It's already available there. I mean, if somebody wants to buy marijuana at the corner of Sahara and the Boulevard, they can buy it. So, it's not like we need to put another dispensary in order to provide, because there's a, a lack of locations for the people that live in that particular area. And then I can go on and on a couple of ones, but I, I just, I, I don't think this is an appropriate, especially use permits are a big deal, we just don't hand them out. I just not sure if this is the best location for this, for a dispensary, based on what I just said. So, hopefully, that's helpful.
Councilwoman Seaman?
Yes. First of all, I believe that Dr. Batty has complied with everything that's legal in the ordinances. Is that correct? I'm going to defer to staff.
Through you, Madam Mayor Protem. Yes, ma'am. The, at, under current codes and current requirements, this application is fully compliant.
Okay. And then I will support Councilwoman Diaz in whatever she decides. I believe it's her ward. I understand the concerns about being close to the casinos. However, you have dispensaries that are closer than what he's bringing in, so I'm not sure I can agree with that argument. So, again, I'm going to defer to Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. You know, I'm a believer in that cannabis is here in our, in our society. You know, you've heard me say that the barn, the cart has left the barn, and we have to figure out a way to deal with it. Yet, I do not think that this is an appropriate spot for a dispensary. You know, it's, it is the gateway to the city. I think that to be bombarded with dispensaries is not really the, the look that we want going into the downtown corridor. I do find it interesting that it was mentioned that a number of gaming properties have issues of people smoking in their properties, which we know that is true. Yet, I was a big proponent of the social use venues because of the fact that it's going to keep honest people honest, and people should have a place to go smoke. Yet, a law was passed and a legislature supported by gaming that has sort of put a squash on that. So, it's somewhat contradictory, yet I do think that, I do think that at a different location, it'd be just fine. I just don't believe that this is the right spot, and I, and I, and I can't support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to say something?
May I?
Okay, one more minute.
Okay. Councilman Anthony, I went around and collected signatures myself from the, that entire neighborhood, from business owners. And also, again, I live maybe a three-minute walking distance myself to that corner. People in my building, as I live at Sky, signed a, a good number of those. I can't tell you what percentage were out of the vicinity or within the vicinity, but I collected a good number of those.
In the immediate area.
In the immediate area, yes. And then one, one, one more quick thing. I, I, I respect having the casinos here. I got here 23 years ago, and I started working for MGM. That's how I got hired as a, as a ER trauma doctor here, and I did orthopedics. But, but we're becoming a big city. We have hospitals, families, doctors, lawyers, and we are no longer a casino state. And it's, it's nice to try to follow what the casinos want us to do all the time, but I'm the public, and I've been here for 23 years. That's all I have to say. Sorry.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and I appreciate the, first and foremost, the interest in moving to Ward 3. I know that is a very difficult part of my ward that we need to give a lot of love and a lot of work into. As my colleague, Councilwoman Knutson, has pointed to, it's, it is increasingly difficult to rent any kind of space. And you kind of drive by different shopping malls, and you see more and more of the storefront space vacant. It's, because as we evolve as a society, a lot of goods aren't being purchased inside square footage. And so, how are we going to ensure that we're creating a different economy, diversify, diversifying the source of employment, ensuring that there is safety in, in our communities? And, I mean, it's incredibly, I understand the gaming's perspective. I, I completely understand. Ever since cannabis was legalized, I smell it in my neighborhood. And it's, you know, one of those things that happened because it was the will of the voters to make sure that we were able to use it in our state. And so, you know, I, I keep thinking about the security issues. And so, you know, I keep thinking about the security issues. I keep thinking about, I think it's actually a pretty good location in terms of egress and ingress, egress. Like, I'm sure you don't have any problems with parking, right, with goodbye. And there's so many other dispensaries that are just strapped for space, too. So it's an incredibly, I'm torn. I feel like I love the people that are invested in this project. And I also love my downtown area command and the gaming. And I kind of feel like, right now, we're a family that's at odds. And so I think, right now, I need to really make sure I do my homework and my due diligence. I think I need to take a field trip out there. So I would like to obey this item until I can really make sure that the decision that I'm going to make is one that I feel 100% comfortable making. So with that, what motion do I have to make?
You're looking, a motion to hold it and obey, so we just need a time certain, Councilwoman? A month, next council meeting?
Let's do...
Can I, if I could, Councilwoman, through you, Mayor, the, Mayor Pro Tem. So the only concern is, and I'm not saying we won't obey, I'm just, so let's keep it as short as possible. And the reason is, when the November 23 date is not that we have to be approved by November 23rd, we have to be open for business on November 23rd.
Let's do, then, the next city council meeting.
Thank you.
That'd be August 7th.
Correct. So your motion is to obey till August 7th?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, to make sure that I am fully on board with my decision moving forward.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
I love having a break. Not that it's anything, but thank you for handling that. And we will move on to Agenda Items 85 through 89. 85 GPA 75219, a request for general plan amendment from RNP Rural Neighborhood Preservation to LLO Density Residential Note. The request was amended at Planning Commission from RNP Rural Neighborhood Preservation to R Rural. Number 86, ZON 75220, and a request for rezoning from RE Residence Estates to R1 Single Family Residential. Number 87, VAR 75221, a request for variance to allow 43-foot-wide private street without a gate, sidewalk on one side where a 47-foot-wide street with a sidewalk on both sides required and a connectivity ratio of 1.0 where 1.30 is required. Number 88, VAC 75222, and a request for a petition to vacate U.S. Government Patent Easements generally located southwest corner Centennial and Jensen Streets, Centennial Parkway and Jensen Street. Number 89, TMP 75223, and a request for a tentative map for an 18-lot single-family residential subdivision with waivers to allow no interior, exterior, street lamps, lights where such is required, deferral of off-site improvements on Regina Avenue, Jensen Street, 884-foot external intersection offset where 220 feet is required. The applicant is D.R. Horton, Inc., and the owner is Alexandra Barbier Living Trust on 5.00 acres southwest corner of Centennial Parkway and Jensen Street. RE Residence Estate Zone proposed R1 Single Family Residential. Planning Commission recommends approval on all items. Staff recommends approval on items number 85 and 88 in denial on numbers 86, 87, and 89. These are in Ward Six with Mayor Pro Tem. Fiori, public hearing items which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present? Hello?
Good afternoon, Your Honor, Councilmembers. My name is Tony Sless, address 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton Homes. First, before I get too much into it, I think I would rather just kind of incorporate the same arguments I made two weeks ago. As you recall, this was abated so that we could have additional meetings. So without rehashing a lot of that, I'd prefer to just kind of go where we left off. So, again, just the property, just so we were familiar, the property is five acres located on the south side of Jensen, I mean, south side of Centennial, east, west side of Jensen and north side of Regina. We've had multiple neighborhood meetings with the residents and the existing development adjacent to us. We appreciate the Mayor Pro Tem's office for helping coordinate that, especially Mr. Dan Burdish and Mr. Chance Bonaventure for putting us in and helping us facilitate those meetings. We had a lot of the meetings, there was an issue essentially with the residential, with our neighbors, where their property line is. Ultimately, it does not have anything really to do with my client and what they're trying to do. However, we were trying to provide a solution and different alternatives. We appreciate Mayor Pro Tem jumping in and having all of us meet with her in that meeting that we just had a few days ago. And ultimately, the existing property owners, I think, ultimately support D.R. Horton, what we're trying to do. We agreed to do all single stories. I want to make sure that's, again, on the record, probably most applicable to the tentative map condition. Again, our GPS, GPA request has been reduced from what we requested originally, that Planning Commission approves. All of those things, we ultimately want to make sure carry forward. And finally, I think what the neighbors are going to explore is just the ability and what they can do to use their own property through there. So with that, I would respectfully request your approval today.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the proposed amendment to the general plan as revised by the applicant and recommended for approval by the Planning Commission would allow a density of 3.59 units per acre adjacent to some properties that are limited to 3 point, also limited to 3.59 units per acre, and other properties that are limited to 2.0 units per acre. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the general plan amendment. The proposed rezoning would allow for minimum lot sizes of 6,500 square feet, and therefore, those would be in violation of the 2016 interlocal agreement between the City of Las Vegas and Clark County, which limits development within Plan Area B, which this is in, within the City of Las Vegas, to maintain a minimum building-on-lot area of 10,000 square feet. As such, staff is recommending denial of this rezoning request. The applicant has also requested a variance in waivers to not gate a private street or to meet public street standards, to not provide additional or provide required street connectivity, to not provide street lights where required, and to defer off-site improvements as well, and not to provide minimal external intersection offset distances. Staff finds that the applicant's hardships to be self-imposed in the requested variance and waivers reinforce the unsuitability of the site design with that of the surrounding residential developments. Therefore, staff has recommended denial of the variance and the associated tentative map. Staff has no objection to the vacation request and would recommend approval of that application. Thank you.
So 88 you give approval to?
Correct, ma'am. Yes, with the adjustment to the R Rural designation, staff can support the GPA. We cannot support the zoning or the variance or the tentative map, but we do support the vacation and the general plan amendment.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone on any of these items, 85 through 89, want to come forward, please, and make your comments? Hearing seen, none, and a closed public comment. And any questions from council? Because we are going to turn this right over to Mayor Pro Tem. Okay, it's yours.
Thank you. So I move to approve item 85, GPA 75219, with all staff conditions.
Thank you. This is a motion to approve Agenda Item 85. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. On 86, please.
I move to approve item number 86, ZON-7522, with all staff conditions.
This is a motion to approve Agenda Item 86. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. On 87, please.
I move to approve item 87, VAR 75221, with all staff conditions.
Thank you. Motion to approve on 87. Please vote and please post. Motion carries on Agenda Item 88.
I move to approve Agenda Item 88 with all staff conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 88. Please vote, please post.
And Madam Mayor, if I may interject on the tentative map for Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay?
Listening.
Based on the applicant's condition, we would propose to add a condition to TMP 75223 that all homes within the subdivision are to be single-story.
Agreed.
You agree?
Agreed, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summerfield.
So on Agenda Item 88?
That was 88.
Yep.
So with the all staff, with all staff conditions, so I move to approve?
89 with the added condition.
With the added conditions?
Please, thank you.
There's a motion, please, to approve with the added conditions. Please vote and please post. And that carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to Agenda Item 90, SUP 76224, public hearing, applicant Taste of Africa owner, F.A.E.C. Holdings, Warula LLC, for possible action, request for special use permit for proposed 12,741-square-foot tavern, limited establishment use with a 1,245-square-foot outdoor patio at 450 Fremont Street, Suite 295, C2, general commercial zone, Ward Five, Councilman Creer. Planning Commission, staff, both recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Hi, I'm Mayor. For the record, Ricky Barlow, 3172 North Rainbow, Suite 20202, representing the applicant Taste of Africa at Neapolis.
Did he mention that this morning? He did?
No, no, he did not mention it this morning. But congratulations to Rohit Joshi on being nominated the Citizen of the Month, as well as to my good friend, Early King, who is nominated Employee of the Month. So congratulations to both of them. And Mayor and councilmembers, I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate the new council members, Councilwoman Diaz and Councilman Knutson, as well as Councilwoman Seaman. Welcome to the council, and of course, my councilman, Councilman Creer. I stand before you today representing Taste of Africa, which is a great tavern, restaurant, African-themed cuisine that is coming into Neapolis. We are going to be on the second floor as well as the third floor of Neapolis. It's approximately close to 10,000 square, well, 12,000 square feet in total. And so we will have an entertainment venue with the entire theme of being from Africa. The proprietors of the ownership is Chris and his wife, Favor Usigby. They hail from Nigeria, Africa. They have, they and their family have large businesses throughout the continent of Africa. And they have a variety of businesses right here in southern Nevada. And they are very pleased and elated to be in the downtown community, specifically with all of the activity taking place in and around the Fremont Street Experience. We see what Derek Stevens is doing, of course, the Downtown Grand and the refurbishing and the repurposing of the Fremont Street Experience as far as the entertainment venue. This location that we're speaking of will be directly above Denny's, just to put this into perspective. And so we will have an opportunity to overlook Fremont Street as well as Fourth Street. And as you all very well know, Mayor, as I understand you and Councilman Creer have been invited to the grand opening of the Katz Meow, which will be our neighbor. And I know that grand opening is tomorrow, so I look forward to seeing you all there. And of course, I understand your husband, my friend, Oscar, is turning 80.
Yeah.
And there's going to be 80 Toast Downtown tomorrow as well. So we're looking forward to be a part of all of that synergy and activity taking place in the downtown community. And so I really want to thank Councilwoman Fiori for a lot of guidance that she has also provided in regards to, you know, some of the ideas that should go into this facility. And so I do want to recognize that as well. So thank you for your comments as well. And of course, Councilman Creer and his entire staff, as well as Mary McElhorn and Minerva, who have basically walked us through this process seamlessly. And so their customer service is most definitely on par, and I really want to appreciate city staff for their support. So at this time, staff is recommending approval, and so does the clients that I represent. They're looking forward to approval as well. And I ask that you all follow the recommendation.
Thank you very much, and welcome. And Mr. Lowenstein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The proposed use meets the goals of the Downtown Las Vegas Master Plan and the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan by providing new opportunities for entertainment and commercial venues. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes may comment on Agenda Item 90?
Mayor, also, allow me to recognize a good friend of mine who also have basically played a consultant role in this venue, and that's none other than Joe Cato, who represents Periwinkle Group. And so I want to thank her also publicly for her leadership in on this because this most definitely was a team effort to bring this to downtown because they were actually looking out into the, looking out in the county. And so we were able to encourage them to come into the downtown community. And so I do want to, you know, give respect where respect is due in regards to this item. So this most definitely was not single-handedly. This was a group effort to bring them and have them spend their money within the City of Las Vegas boundaries.
Thank you. What is the timeline for getting it open, should the council follow Councilman Creer? If Councilman Creer is of the mind to recommend approval?
Right, right now, you're looking at approximately six to eight months. So we can actually start construction within the next 60 to 90 days. And from that point forward, we can look at, you know, possibly right at the first quarter of 2020 of opening the door and inviting the entire council out to celebrate a Taste of Africa.
And it's breakfast, lunch, and dinner, or what is the...
Right now, the, right now, it will be lunch and dinner.
Okay.
Right, for now.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And it will be a 24-hour venue with hookah and entertainment periodically throughout the month.
Wonderful. Okay, Councilman, yours.
Thank you. I'm not sure if any of my colleagues have comments. Madam Mayor, Pro Tem?
Thank you, Councilman Creer. I just have to say, it's exciting to see you here and bringing business to our city, and I know you love our city. And I just wanted to tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, without any further comment, this is a great project that's going to round out in Neapolis, and I'm looking forward to being there for ribbon cutting. So I am going to make a motion to approve Item 90, SUP 76224.
Thank you. This is a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. Councilman Knutson, you got it? Good, done. Well, first time, done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Unanimous. Thank you. Good luck.
You all take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item 91's been abated August 21st, so we're on to Agenda Item...
Madam Mayor, it's 92 that was abated.
So sorry, I put my circle around the wrong number, and I can see that when I read my book. Good catch. We're at 91. You must have thought, oh, my God, she's lost her mind. This is ZON 76105, public hearing, applicant owner, S&amp;D Graham Properties LLC. Possible action, a request for rezoning from PR Professional Office and Parking to C1 Limited Commercial on 1 acre at 1353 Arville. This is in Ward One with Councilman Knutson. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. So this is a public hearing, which I declare open, and the applicant must be, you are the applicant.
Yes, ma'am. Hi, my name is Darla Graham, and the property is 1353 Arville Street.
Okay, and do you want to tell us a little bit about what it is and what you're going to do?
I'm asking for approval of the zoning change. We had a business located in that facility, and we had sold that business, and now we're looking to lease it.
Lease it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any comments, Mr. Summerfield, here?
Madam Mayor, the proposed zoning district is in compliance with the existing service commercial general plan designation, as well as the surrounding land uses, which contain a mix of office, retail, and educational land uses, which are consistent with a C1 zoning district. As such, staff has recommended approval of this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, and this is a public hearing, anyone from the public wishing to be heard on this item? We'll close it, and we'll, any comments from council before I turn it over to Councilman Knutson? Baby's yours.
Thank you very much, and I want to apologize in advance, because I haven't met you, and so I feel unprepared to talk about this particular item. I have driven by, obviously, I think there's a picture up before, it's a vacant building right now with a lot in the back, but I don't know what you want to do with it, and so the only concern I really have is that there's a child, there's a playground and a school right behind it.
Yes.
And so there was some concern expressed around how you would use that space, and I am not sure why you're asking for the change. And so if you could kind of clarify for me what your intention is for that entire space, and how it's consistent or inconsistent with the existing use now.
Well, we're not looking to change the vacant land and building anything further on the building. The building exists now and meets all the requirements for C1. We're interested in just leasing that building to someone that would be compatible with the neighborhood.
So because I'm a newbie, and I apologize for that, it's not your fault?
So am I.
Okay, well, let's be new together. So I'm going to ask for some advice from our staff on what to do. I feel like I don't know you, and I understand the need to lease out the building, and maybe a little, a quick tutorial on how changing the zone would be helpful to leasing out that space would be helpful for me.
Madam Mayor, through you, Councilman, so with the zone change, any use that is permitted either by right or condition or applicable for a special use permit in a C1 zone could be requested at this location. This is an existing building, so there's a number of uses. The PR zoning district is meant to be a transitional zone between single-family residential and commercial. It's typically not something where you'd see an office building of this structural stature. It really is the conversion kind of of a single-family home into an office. You have quite a few of these on Jones and Maryland Parkway and areas like that where you kind of have some large street frontages. This property with the rezoning could be, again, become any of those things, so it would not be, it would not be inappropriate if you have any questions or concerns and want to better understand what the potential future tenant on this is, to possibly hold it for two weeks or until the next meeting to meet with the property owner. Again, when you do rezone this, it will be eligible for any C1 permitted use, conditional use, or special use permit.
And it doesn't sound as if you have someone ready to lease the space?
Yes, we do.
You do, can you?
We have two potential customers right now
Okay.
that are looking at bringing in architects to make any interior changes, that are ready to make an offer and lease this, but they are not willing to do that until we have the C1 zoning. It creates a large hardship for me personally to continue to obey this. I would like to, if possible, answer any questions you have now, so that we could continue on with the zoning, since it has been approved by staff and the Planning Commission. We operated a business out of there for 24 years, we were business owners, we had a medical equipment, it was NBI x-ray and medical supply. We've always complied with everything that the state, county, EPA, all regulations that have been put before us. I was born and raised here, I'm 55 years old, I've been a member of this community for that length of time, and I would never put anything in that neighborhood that I wouldn't want in my neighborhood. I would like to answering questions you have, so hopefully we can proceed forward.
And I appreciate that, and my intention is not to obey, it simply was to better understand the potential use, so you're negotiating with potentially two different clients. I, for my own comfort level, because of the school behind it, I just want to make sure that it's compatible.
And I've talked with the rabbi, the rabbi and I have talked several times. We try to be good neighbors with them, because they are at the back of our property, and of course, considering it's a school and some of the security issues they have, we really feel it would be advantageous also to get someone in that building, so it's not consistently vacant, because I think that creates more of a security problem for them with the building continuing to be vacant.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, I just would point out, because I believe, Councilman, you did have this question, on the back part of the lot where it is vacant, if they were to propose to do anything back there, they would have to come through with a new site development review to get approval for any additional construction in that rear portion of the property. So there would be subsequent applications that they would need to come forward with if they were to try to develop anything beyond the current building that is built on the site.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. May I just request, I know that you're new, maybe suggests it's totally up to you, but when you meet with them to discuss, maybe just get copies of the LOIs, the letters of intent of the people that want to lease, so you can see what kind of business wants to be placed there in order for you to make a decision on zone change.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, so I think you said some very important things to me, especially regarding the rabbi who I'm familiar with in that area. So given that, my request would be, is it if I approve, because I don't want to make a new hardship on you, if you're able to meet with me following this, I would move for approval. I would like to talk about who you plan on going into that space, so that I can just be informed, if that's okay?
Certainly.
Okay.
And I would like to add, if I might, Councilman, the, it's not you that's in question, obviously, with your previous life and involvement with the property and everything else, it's just the ability that we have through the city to vet some issues that might help you in making your selection, if there are choices that you might have made, so I think just the courtesy to Councilman Knutson would be great, and so you're going to move for approval? Go ahead. Subject any conditions?
Just one comment, and I'm just trying to understand, are you, are you looking to obey this?
No.
Okay, so, you know, one of the issues is that when you go from professional office to a C1 limited commercial, it opens up a lot of opportunities, a lot of businesses that could come in there. It could be, you know, there's a list of, on the categories of C1 which you could do, and so that's one of the concerns, is that your business, it's not like your business was an office that you ran, hence professional office. Now you're going to have a commercial business of people coming in and out, and there's a lot more issues associated with that. Do you, and do you know what type of businesses, is, type of business is going to go in there? Did I miss that?
Yes.
Okay.
They said they didn't know they were just going to lease it, but I think Councilman Knutson were asked that they would stay involved with him, to so they can sort of help vet what's coming through.
The challenge is that once the zoning goes through, then
Right.
you don't have to come back and talk to us anymore.
And I can appreciate your concern about that. The building itself doesn't lend itself to a commercial building that has a lot of traffic. We only have 22 parking spaces.
Yep.
And so it's not like it would lend itself to have a heavy retail presence. Also, the building has quite a bit of warehouse space, so it's, it's not like you're, you would, that it would even work for someone that would have a large, like, retail presence.
But you, you said you have two people that you're talking to, are you willing to let us know?
One of them is a medical laboratory that would not have any traffic per se, just their employees and any particular, like, samples or stuff they picked up, so they'd have a courier, so they would have no retail presence of coming and going out of the building. And then the other one is, right, a pottery, ceramics and pottery, and they want to put a kiln in, and it's, I don't believe it's a, is it retail, or?
Not really.
It's not really a retail-type business.
Well, of course, there'd be things that our Planning Commission would have to go or be aware of, because if you have a kiln, you have a whole different
And they are currently going to meet with the fire department and run all that through to make sure that that's acceptable.
For the edification of this council, I do, I'm familiar with the building, I've driven by multiple times, I, there's not a whole lot that can go in that type of space with that parking in that area, and so I'm, I'm confident that as long as, I think what you're asking for is the permission to change, because it makes your ability to lease much easier, and
Yes.
as long as, as long as if we can work together on just making me aware of who you're going to lease to, it'll make me much more comfortable.
Sure.
Thank you. With that, I would move for approval.
Fine, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 91, please vote.
Thank you.
And please post. Great, motion carries, good luck, we'll be watching you.
Thank you. How am I supposed to get in touch with you to make that appointment?
I will track you down, I don't know my phone, phone number, I would, I would give it to you, and I don't know how to get it really easily, but I will track you down.
We'll go online to the city of Las Vegas, or go to our wonderful app, and all you do is ask for Councilman Brian Knutson, Ward 1, and it happens to be carried every day in the Las Vegas sun.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
With your phone number, email, blood type, everything.
Thank you so much for your time.
He'll look forward to having you in to see what you've got going. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to 93, 94, 95, as we have abayed to August 21st, number 92. And 93, VAR 76335, and a request for variance to allow a zero-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required. 94, VAR 76336, a request for variance to allow 30 parking spaces where 32 spaces are required. Number 95, SDR 76337, and a request for a site development plan review for proposed 871 square foot addition to an existing building with a waiver to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along the north perimeter where 15 feet is required, zero-foot landscape buffer along east perimeter where 8 feet is required. The applicant owner is Patron Investments LLC on .39 acres at 1618 and 1622 East Charleston Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial Zone. On all items, Planning Commission recommends approval, and staff recommends denial. These are in Ward 3 with Councilwoman Diaz, and are public hearing open items which I now declare open. Is the applicant or representative present? He's there, but I can't see him or her.
Is he there?
No, he's not. Okay, so Mr. Summerfield, Mr. Lowenstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The proposed development does not meet Title 19 setbacks, parking and landscape buffer requirements. No evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances been presented, and staff concludes that the site is being overbuilt, as evidenced by the associated variance requests. Has the applicant's hardship of preferential nature, staff therefore recommends denial of all applications. Thank you.
Thank you very much, it's public hearing, does anybody wish to be heard on any of these items? Well, lucky you, Councilwoman, there's nobody here to talk to.
Yes, and seeing that we don't have someone representing this item, I do have some questions that I'd like to ask them, and so I think the best thing would be to obey it two weeks out, to ensure and see if we can either know where they stand, if they're going to continue with this project or not, but I definitely have some questions for them. So I'd like to motion to obey items 93, 94, 95
Thank you.
for two weeks.
Okay, that puts us to what, August 5th?
August 7th.
August 7th, and legal counsel, it's all right, take them together, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. There's a motion to obey 93, 94, 95 to the August 7th meeting for Councilwoman Diaz. That's what we'll do, and I've closed the public hearing, if I didn't, I do now. So please vote and please post. Okay, he has stepped out. And that motion carries, thank you very much. We'll now move on to Agenda Item 96, VAR 76293, public hearing, applicant owner, Cypress S, SUB 2 or SUB 2 LLC for possible action or request for variance to allow a five-yard front yard setback where 20 feet is required, 10-yard rear yard, and a 12-foot corner side yard setback where 15 feet is required for a proposed single-family dwelling on .14 acres northeast corner of Ogden Avenue and 18th, R1 Single Family Residential Zone, and this is Ward 3 again with Councilwoman Diaz. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Hello, Mayor Goodman. My name's Stavros Georgiou, 7450 Southeastern Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Oh, do you want to tell us?
Stavros.
Wow.
The only one.
You should have invited him to lunch, both with beards.
Who are you with? What's that? What do you do? I used to be in the restaurant biz, I think you visited my restaurant back in the day, yeah, my straw at the Hilton, and then I have Ali's A, yeah. I remember that, okay, yeah. It's a while back.
Was it serving Greek food?
No, no, it was actually Chef Andre Rochat, so it was French food, yeah.
All right, so tell us about your item, please.
Okay, so the, the project I'm working on, it's on the corner of 18th and Ogden. I'm happy to say I had unanimous approval from the Planning Commission on June 11th. As you know, there's been a significant investment on Fremont Street heading up towards 8, 11th Street, but nothing really much past Maryland. The parcel I bought is, it's been vacant land for about 50 years now, and I'm hoping that what I'm trying to do here is, could be maybe a catalyst for future investment in the future, or further, further east, excuse me. I'm going to build this as my home, it's going to be made out of shipping containers, a little bit outside the box. I've been kind of obsessed with it and researching this for many years now. It will be a green design incorporating solar panels, looking to make it a net-zero energy consumption. I will be living there, contemporary design with an open interior courtyard. The challenge that I have is that being on the corner of, of 18th and Ogden, on the corner, on the Ogden side, normally there'd be a five-foot setback, but now it's going to be 15 feet, because it's on the corner there. So it's actually making me, having to make my, my structure a bit longer, which is pushing me into the variance territory. I'm trying to have it so that this interior courtyard is kind of a lush, I have a pool, koi pond, cabana, everything's looking interior. The exterior of the, of the, of the structure, I want to actually kind of dedicate to local artists for beautiful murals, that they can really decorate and have it changed a few times a year, so it can actually maybe turn into somewhat of a, an attraction for that area. You know, that can be dedicated as a homage to downtown Las Vegas, Vegas Strong, it could be Golden Knights artwork, local soccer teams of neighborhood. I did want to mention that there is a right-of-way on 18th Street as well on Ogden, on 18th Street, there's an 18-foot right-of-way. I spoke to Mr. Steve Gabecki from the planning supervisor, and he mentioned that he didn't see any reason for 18th Street to have to be widened, so I'm hoping with my variance, which is the five-foot in the front, in the front yard, I would still have 23 feet to the curb, and then on the side curb for Ogden, I would still have 19 feet with the right-of-way that's already there.
Have we, if I might ask, you know, how we're widening streets on Fremont East, is that potential for looking to the future, having to widen and?
Madam Mayor, I will defer to Mr. Anderson on that one.
Bart Anderson, Public Works. The city has an interest in complete streets and landscaped byways and things of that nature, so it is entirely conceivable that at some point we might want to put in street trees and such, but that would be within the existing right-of-way. He's not asking to vacate that right-of-way, he's just saying that right now it's, it's that much extra distance as a means to justify his reduced onsite setbacks, but he's not asking to encroach or vacate our right-of-way, and I suspect any future widening that we may do, and I'm not saying we will, but if we do, would be contained within our existing right-of-way, and so you just need to consider that it would still be right-of-way, and so his onsite setbacks, do they make sense to you?
Okay.
Because he won't be using our right-of-way for
Okay, I mean, because we are widening, much as we have done on Commerce and Main Street
Sure.
where we haven't changed setbacks, but we've claimed the streets to be able to streetscape, landscape, widen them, to make them more comfortable for the community.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not going over it, I'm not, as you said, I'm not taking it, but I am planning on, you know, doing lush landscaping and making it beautiful and making it, you know, something I think that would add to the community.
And since you And since you're using, I'm sure, since you've been here for a while, you know Arnold Stock, Dr. Arnold Stock, S.T.A.L.K.
I don't, no.
He's been in town for about 20 years and he is a PhD in architecture who, back at least 20 years ago, brought the first concept of using cargo containers in Long Beach, California. They're all over the world in ports, making them into housing. In fact, he developed one specifically during the days of Katrina to be able to airlift them and ship them down into that area. So he's with Veterans Village, if you go ahead and Google Dr. Arnold Stock, S.T.A.L.K. He's been working with cargo containers all these years.
I'd be a nice insight.
So he, you know, it may be of no value to you at all, but it may be of great interest. And as you run through your concepts and he'll have shortcuts, whatever, I have no idea.
Any, any information would be helpful, absolutely. It's, it's all new to me. I've built, I've built traditional houses, but I have not built.
Oh, then it's a must. It really is a must that you talk with him. He's just really become an expert, especially when it comes to veteran housing and what we're able to do and does have them now on a couple of the veteran sites. One at, goodness, where's that? It's down at the three corners, four corners. But you can find that information out there and we'd be happy to introduce you, whatever. So this is very exciting. I don't know if I asked public if you have any comment on Number 96. Please come forward, make comment. I will close public hearing and we'll turn this over to-
Staff report.
Pardon?
Down here for the staff report.
Hello.
Hello. Just real quick for the record.
Oh, I thought that was his report.
Yeah.
That was only a half report.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, so the proposed development, as indicated, does not meet Title 19 setback requirements. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented and so staff has concluded that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature. Staff is therefore recommending denial of the variance request. I do just want to make sure that we're clear for the record. The applicant did mention that he may wish to do landscaping, lush landscaping within the right-of-way. If at some future date he does choose to want to do that, he does need to come back to the city, work with the land development section of the Building and Safety Department because that will require an encroachment agreement because technically that is city right-of-way and he will need approval before he can do any work within that space. With that, Madam Mayor, if there's any questions, otherwise, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Council, and does anybody, I heard a breathing down there.
I do. I have a, I have a question. When you say you're going to build containers, there are some architectural renderings in our backup material, but there's nothing to show what it's actually going to look like. And the last picture that's on here is a stack of containers with, I don't know who that is, if that's Zeus or David or some Greek god of like one, two, three, four, five, six containers, seven containers stacked up together. That's not what it's going to look like, right?
Not at all, no, sir.
I thought it was pretty cool.
Well, you know what? That's fine, but I'm not sure if the neighbors would like that.
No, 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 absolutely not. I just, I just wanted to give an example of how, how some people have decorated shipping containers, making it instead of a typical eyesore, it's turned into an actual work of art.
I do too.
That's the only reason I did that.
Yeah, look, it's not my neighborhood, but I'm just saying that if it was coming to my neighborhood, I would have an issue with it. But you don't have anything of what is, these architecture drawings or more sketches of what the patio, is it, do you have something that, what it's going to look like?
I have some, I have this one right here, if you have the overhead on.
Yeah, that.
Yeah. Okay, so I have this one here. The design has changed since.
I really can't see it. I don't know if they can zoom in on it or.
So the design has changed. This, this top section here is no longer. I'm just going to have one, it's going to be an, a cabana which is going to be on the actual north side and it'll be a rooftop deck. But it's going to be basically a single story off to the east side. There'll be a carport that goes under. And then on the western side of it, there's going to be a double container which would be more of a kind of a studio apartment.
And have you spoken to the neighbors about what that might look like? Because it's not a very, it's not traditional home whatsoever.
It's not a traditional home, no. I spoke to, I spoke to a couple of gentlemen that were off to the, there's a kind of apartments, apartments that are off to the left that you'll see, I guess you can say it would be west of 18th Street. There is a more higher density. I've spoken to a few people there, they're pretty, they're pretty excited about it. The gentleman, the people that are actually directly across from me on Ogden, they're also excited about it. They actually offered to do the drywall. But, yeah, I haven't had any opposition.
Okay, well, I'll be interested to hear what my colleagues have to say.
And I'm assuming that you've seen the sketch, the drawing? Yeah, okay.
Was that answer enough to answer what you asked for?
Yeah, I, I think it's interesting. Like I said, I'd be interested to hear my colleagues have to say because it's very untraditional and in a very established, older neighborhood, that might be a little bit of a culture shock for a lot of people. It would be for my neighborhood.
Sure, understood. I mean, I think that the, you know, it's really just been a, unfortunately, a vacant lot, it's been a blight. There's, there's been, you know, trash and everything that's, it's never been used. I'm just trying to actually add to the community in my own sense, as well as, you know, I'm actually hoping this project moves forward. I plan on living there. I also plan on hopefully getting some positive recognition from it and possibly, you know, contributing and trying to offer, you know, lower, lower income housing and, you know, student housing and try to help the rent situation that's in this town. If I can move forward and have something to actually say is my-
Well, I'm sure Councilwoman Diaz will ask you about things of meetings with neighborhood, you know, and residents and so she'll put you through it.
Thank you, Mayor. And we did have a meeting in my office and I did ask at that time if you had reached out to all of the neighbors that would have your very unique home next door to them. And so did you receive feedback?
I went on, I went on Monday for the people behind me as well as the one directly next to me, and there was no luck. I mean, I guess my timing may be off. I was there around 11 o'clock, 11 AM.
Okay. So you haven't been successful in reaching them? Have you had any attempts of like having any meetings with the community there just to kind of get their feel?
I have not, no. I mean, I guess I'm kind of relying on the fact that the proposal is being, you know, there's a big sign on there saying what I'm trying to do. There's the proposal that's sent out to everyone and they have, they have an opportunity to say approve or denial. And, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, yeah. I'm just saying, you know, the, I guess when I spoke with, with the building department as far as the, the actual building itself, you know, as long as I'm within the parameters of what the building code is, I know that it's outside of the box being a shipping container. They did not have an issue with it being a shipping container as long as I build it to their, to their standards.
And Mr. Summerfield, have those standards been satisfied?
Madam Mayor, through you. So he has not yet submitted his building permit package. He actually needs the variance in order to do that. So once he goes through building permits, that is the next step for him, is to get all of his various approvals. Building and Safety will review all of his, his documentation. He will have to show that he's meeting structural and electrical, energy code, all those various components as a part of his building permit submittal package.
Okay.
But we do not have that yet because he needs this approval before he can really move forward with that next step.
Understood. It is quite close in proximity to Hollingsworth Elementary, so we did talk about how the exterior needed to be done tastefully and G-rated because we will have little ones walking by his home. And so we want to make sure that we are, making sure that the exterior is inspirational and motivational for, for the community and not something that, as a parent, I would be terrified for my eight-year-old to see.
No, there'll be, there'll be no nude gods or anything on the side.
No nude paintings on the containers. Did you have something else?
I did. Councilwoman Diaz, through the mayor. Question for Mr. Summerfield. A little bit ago, we had a, an issue in the mayor's neighborhood in Scott Chatty where a person had built a garage and then they didn't have a structure, a home structure. They were storing it as a garage. I'm not sure if this ties into the same thing because they had built a, a structure that was just there, but there was no dwelling associated with it. And I don't remember what happened from that, but I don't know if they would fall into the same category. You know, and then also, just for note, in Councilman Knutson's ward, you know, there's that Shangri-La house, a Shangri-La, Shangri-La house, which is red, painted with Louis Vuitton. They changed it to Louis Vuitton painting and then they changed it to put some type of Marvel comics all over the house or so. And I don't think the neighbors have much recourse of it. It is a definite, it stands out. I don't live, my brother lives in the neighborhood, but, so I can't tell you if it's blight or not because I don't live there yet. You know, that's something to be concerned about, not to say that you will, but there's, it's just an example of-
Understood, yeah.
Something that could just be anything and the neighbors are stuck with it.
I, I think that-
Just want, I have a, I have a question for him first. A question about that garage. Is that, will it fall in this category since it's a container or?
It would not. Madam Mayor, through you, so no, because he's designating this as his primary residence, it will satisfy the requirement that you must have a resident, a primary residence before an accessory structure.
Right, that's it.
And to your point about the Shangri-La and some others, we do not have aesthetic controls on residential structures. HOAs, various HOAs may, and even some neighborhood associations may have some questions there. But unfortunate, not unfortunately, fortunately, in our community, we have not gone to that level of aesthetic control outside of our HOA communities. And so provided that he is using the appropriate materials, does not include any commercial messaging on his home. If he were to do murals or artwork, he can, he can do that under our current codes.
And if I may, I mean, the artwork is kind of congruent with what's going on downtown. I mean, if you go down Fremont, you see a lot of, you know, beautiful murals along the walls. I think it kind of adds to the art and kind of eclectic area. And hopefully I would think to continue that moving east and there's more investment. So it's kind of just what I'm going for. Yeah. Yeah.
All right. I think all my questions are answered. I would like to get your word on making sure that we do as much to garner community meetings around what the physical aesthetics will look like. I think that when you have buy-in from the community about what you're going to be painting onto your containers before it's done would save you money and grief and at least kind of get the pulse of what your neighbors are comfortable with. So if I could have your word that you will ensure that that type of, you know, due diligence is done. You're going to have to go door by door, leave a hanger saying, hey, I want you guys to reach out to me. Maybe you have a concept in mind that you want to leave behind. But I think it does, you know, I think respect towards those that are there and getting some buy-in from them is, goes a long way. So I think that that would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay. So what's the motion I need to make? Because I'm not sure, Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, through you. So it sounds like you're in support of this item, so it would be a motion to approve subject to, if approved, conditions.
Correct. So moved.
So on Agenda 96, motion to approve, subject to conditions that will come about, I'm sure. And please vote and please post. And that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And I asked Ms. Campbell here to give you a little post-it so you know the name. And please feel free to use my name in that reference. He's terrific.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And now on Agenda 97, because I know it's signage, but I guess it has to do with marijuana and therefore I have to refuse myself and because one of my sons is in that industry for business, so. Mayor Protem, the ball's yours.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, VAR 76344, applicant Ben Siloto, owner 1800 Industrial LLC, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a zero-foot setback where five feet is required for two proposed monument signs at 1800 Industrial Road. M Industrial Zone, it's in Councilwoman Diaz's ward. The Planning Commission and staff recommend denial. This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Is the applicant present? There you go.
Yes. Hi, Ben Siloto, representing Oasis Cannabis Dispensary, 1800 Industrial Road. So I'm here with the property owner, 1800 Industrial Road, he's here in support of it. We have a situation where Oasis Cannabis has grown in its business and we're seeing, you know, 600-plus customers a day, which is fantastic. There are 40 other tenants in our building and so the traffic has grown to a point where it's affecting their patrons and our customers. And we're, we're coming up with some traffic choke points that we're seeing. If I will, on the, on the screen below, I'd love to, to show this diagram here. There's no signage indicating the proper ingress and egress points for this property. And the way that the traffic flows, the current parking lot configuration in the front of the building has, the lots, the spaces are designed for a north-to-south flow. And then we have Oasis customers that are entering through this part here to get to the Oasis front door in the back. We have Oasis customers also exiting this way. And then the rest of the tenants that are in the front of this building are also exiting this way. So we have a, kind of a triple traffic jam right there occurring at Point B. So what we would like to do is to add a signage that would indicate kind of the proper entrance point, which would be Point A on the north side of the parking lot, and then direct traffic to flow south to access Oasis and then to exit at Point B. And we believe that this would alleviate some of the traffic congestion that we've had. And so we have looked at adding signage at these points that are indicated. As you can see here, there are landscaping trees inside of the, the points where we would put the signage. And so, you know, a five-foot setback would not really be appropriate because it would be kind of in the driveway. And so we are requesting a variance to have a zero-foot setback so that the entrance and exit signs can be seen from the road. At Planning Commission, we received some feedback that they would like to keep the trees in place in the limited landscaping that we have on the property already. We are in support of that condition. And so we, we are asking for approval for this variance so that we can help improve the public safety for both the tenants and their patrons and Oasis customers.
Thank you. Mr. Summerfield? Or Mr. Lowenstein?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Jeff, if you could put back the rendering on the presentation, I'd appreciate that. The applicant is proposing to install two double-sided monument, sided monument signs at the existing marijuana dispensary. The proposed monument signs are positioned over two landscape islands containing trees, thus requiring the removal of the existing planting material. While moving the proposed monument signs five feet from the property line would allow for conformance with Title 19 requirements, this would result in encroachment over the existing drive aisles. However, an existing wall sign for the marijuana dispensary is contained on the subject site. Additionally, the use is advertising on a billboard located adjacent to the subject site facing Industrial Road. As such, staff has determined that the proposed signage is inconsistent with the intent of the Title 19 Commercial and Industrial District Sign Development Standards and therefore staff recommends denial of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item?
Charles Fox, I'm the landlord, 1800 Industrial Road. These guys have been a great tenant, everything they do is in great taste. So I'm, I'm excited that they could do that because, like Ben has said, the traffic is a little bit, you know, discombobulated because of their success. And this would definitely help with that, that traffic flow.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a public hearing. Does anyone else want to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Anyone up here want to have a comment before I turn it over to Councilwoman Diaz? Councilwoman Diaz? Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. And Mr. Lowenstein, based on the new rendering of the signs coming in and out, now the landscaping is staying put, the signers are much smaller, is, would that be something that is acceptable to help manage traffic in the area?
Per the code, we have incidental signage, which is limited in its square footage- Per the code, we have incidental signage, which is limited in its square footage, and what can also be displayed on it. The renderings that he was just showing, I haven't seen until the moment he just showed it. So, I'd, I'd hedge to say that it still fails to meet the minimum setback requirements, and the variance would still be required, but I wouldn't have the elevations in the backup materials. So when, and when and if a permit came, we'd have something to hold it against. This is a multi-tenant building. The traffic flow from the southern ingress egress point can go directly back to the dispensary. The other tenants in the front are relying on that one-way traffic from the north ingress down to the south. So their revised rendering would, you know, show the, where the traffic could go, but it also contains their commercial logo on it, in a multi-tenant building. So, in, in summary, I think the variance would still be required, but I would need those elevations submitted to us, so that when a permit is submitted, we can review it against that.
Okay. I recently visited it, and there were many folks who were parking who had a hard time locating where they were at. So I do get the confusion of where to turn in, where to go, how to navigate it, and if you're looking, especially for the dispensary, you might kind of run into everybody else who's trying to get into the other spaces. So I do see kind of the convenience of the signage for those folks, because I think it has augmented the volume of folks visiting the shopping center. And if it can expedite, and it can make sure that traffic flows in a way that it should, I think that, you know, hopefully, it will meet the standards. But I did hear from Mr. Siloto that if, for some reason, the logo is a no-go, then he would just do an enter-exit, you know, but to just make sure that, you know, there's that signage there for folks who are navigating, trying to find the location. So, you tell me how to go on this one.
It would be my suggestion, if the intent is to have directional signage there, then I would move to approve the, the variance to allow the setback requirement, but then have the signage be reviewed by planning staff for, you know, the directional signage, so if the intent is to retain the landscaping at that point, to work with staff in the permitting process to maintain the landscaping and an appropriate sign.
Mr. Siloto, are you willing to work with our staff on that, and making sure that the signage can be installed per the needs of the tenants and, and the landlord?
Mayor Protem, through you, absolutely. Councilwoman Diaz, it's a pleasure to work with the planning staff at the City of Las Vegas, and I'll be happy to continue to do so. Mr. Lowenstein, to answer your question, the, the new elevations show about a four-foot height, and I'd be happy to submit for the record these renderings, so you may review them in the meantime.
All right, so, Mr. Lowenstein, if you can make that motion, because I can't reiterate everything you just said.
Sure. Through you, Mayor Protem. The motion would be approve the variance with direction of the applicant to work with staff to accommodate the landscaping and directional signage.
So moved. Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Let's take, we're on to 98 now. SUP 76351, public hearing applicant, I need cash now. Well, who doesn't?
Right.
Owner, Red Feather Property LLC, if possible action, a request for a special use permit for proposed 1,730 square foot financial institution. Specified use with waivers to allow a 59-foot distance separation from parcel zone for residential use, where 200 feet is required, and a 660-foot distance separation from another financial institution specified, where 1,000 feet is required at 3281 North Decatur Boulevard, Suites 250 and 260. C2, general commercial zone, this is in Ward 5 with Councilman Creer. Planning Commission and staff both recommend denial. This is a public hearing, which I declare open, and you are the applicant's rep, so.
Correct.
Go for it.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, Councilmembers. My name is Tony Sless, address 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, I apologize for the late notice, but we are, after consultation with the councilman's office, I would like to withdraw this item without prejudice, continue working with his office to find a more appropriate location for this, and that's my request. I appreciate it.
So it is a request to withdraw without prejudice. How say you, Councilman Creer? As a birthday present to him.
That's right, get him out earlier.
Yours to him, whichever way. So is that your motion?
Yes, make a motion to withdraw. Make a motion to withdraw it without prejudice.
Okay, there's a motion to withdraw without prejudice on Agenda Item 98. Please vote, and please post.
Thank you.
Lovely way to have a last item.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's a good one.
So we now move on to Agenda Item 99, for instructing the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous building where nuisance-led abatements.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you very, very much. And this is the second and last opportunity of citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within their jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council's not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? We'll set the time at one minute. Hearing and seeing no one, we will move on to Agenda Item 101. Councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. Is there any member of the council, we always do make comment, who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? We will start with Councilwoman Seaman down at the far right from your vision.
Thank you so much. So, today, I want to talk about, we presented a proclamation in my ward to Rapid Visa. We're commemorating their 10th anniversary, as well as the grand opening of their Las Vegas headquarters. And we also are presenting a certificate of recognition today to, or tomorrow, to a Tria Savie Chef Showdown Challenge, and we're commemorating their second annual community event featuring the high-quality food the community is known to provide their senior residents. And then, I think we have a PowerPoint, yes. So we are starting our monthly community breakfast buzz in Ward 2 Biz, Saturday, August 17th, from 9:00 to 10:30, at Rachel's Kitchen, at 9691 Trailwood Drive. And so, everybody's welcome to come and bring their issues and concerns. And then we're also announcing our Ward 2 office hours are out in the satellite office over at Veterans Memorial Community Center. And my special assistant, Brian, will be there most Thursdays from 7:00 to 11:00, and 3:00 to 7:00, so we can accommodate people's working hours. So I hope people will come and share their concerns with us. And we will be reappointing Vito Galati for our Senior Citizens Advisory Board. I want to congratulate my new appointment for Planning Commission, Segal Chada, and we're excited about working with her. And we're going to be doing a Ward 2 Small Business Initiative. Each week, we'll feature and introduce a local business in Ward 2 in our social media platforms. So we want people to submit their business to be featured, starting August 3rd. They can call my office at 702-229-2420. And lastly, we are going to be doing an event each month with our Senior Citizens Advisory Board, Vito Galati. He will, he'll, will do anything from educational seminars to social events, starting in September. So I'm really excited about all the things that we're doing in Ward 2.
Great, thank you very much. Birthday boy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to everybody for the wonderful birthday wishes. I plan on celebrating tomorrow. I have a full day of work. My schedule starts at 8:30. I don't think I get done until after hour. Catch me out.
Are you asking for doughnut, birthday doughnuts?
Asking for some, asking for a moment off, but I'm not going to get it. So Alpha Alpha Day, once again, join me and Alpha Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. We host a free family fun day on Saturday, July 20th, in conjunction with Alpha Alpha Fraternity's 113th anniversary, 95th convention. We start at 9:00 AM with the ceremony to present a $10,000 check for two new scoreboards at the Doolittle baseball fields. Our Strong Start pre-K Mobile Academy will offer tours from 9:00 AM to noon at the Doolittle Community Center. At 10:00 AM to noon, a free swim lessons will be offered at the Doolittle Pool for all ages. And then, join us from noon to 3:00 for a summer splash party. Light refreshments and lunch will be served for children while supplies last. And then don't forget that Congressman Horford is hosting a health symposium from 12:30 PM to 3:00 PM at Nevada Partners, located 710 Lake Mead Boulevard. The day offers something for everybody, and is open for the entire family. For more information, give my office a call, 702-229-5443. The West Las Vegas Performing and Visual Arts Camp performances takes place this summer. Their final musical, hashtag viral. It is, the last one last year was absolutely amazing, what they did. It is truly, 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 a really, really good musical. Saturday, July 27th, at 7:30 PM at the Smith Center for the Performing Arts. Wednesday, July 31st, at 2:00 PM, the Clark County Library Theater. Thursday, August 1st, at 2:00 PM, the Charleston Heights Art Center. And Saturday, August 3rd, at 2:00 PM, the West Las Vegas Library Theater. Now, this is very important, although it's free, tickets are required to attend the July 27th performance at the Smith Center. And tickets will be available starting Saturday, July 20th. For more information about the Smith Center performance and ticket process, you must contact their box office, at 702-749-2000. Although the, all performances are free and open to the public, if you have any questions about the Clark County Library, Charleston Heights, or West Las Vegas performance, call A Ward 5 Construction and Trades Hiring Event is going to take place. The City Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency and Ward 5 Works invite you to a hiring event, which will take place on Tuesday, August 20th, from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM, at City Hall, located at 495 South Main Street, right on the second-floor lobby. Learn to build an awareness, an awesome career in construction and trades. You will have the opportunity to meet with subcontractors, participate in onsite interviews, and get employment resources. So you don't want to miss this opportunity to get, get working and be a part of the building that's going in Las Vegas. You can register at www.nvcareercenter.org/events/ward5works, or call 702-229-5277. Our Courtyard Homeless Resource Center, which is located right in Ward 5, we're going to skip that one, yes. The Courtyard Homeless Center is open 24 hours, seven days a week. The Courtyard offers a daily programming schedule with a variety of services to address the needs of the community. For those who need overnight stays, check-in begins at 7:30 PM. And I'm very appreciative to have the Courtyard up and running for 24 hours, and I'd like to personally thank Kathy Thomas Gibson and her staff for their involvement to make the Courtyard a success. We are at overcapacity right now, and it's really been an overwhelming response to the Courtyard. For a full list of available services at the Courtyard, you can send email to corridorofhope@lasvegasnevada glv, or call 702-229-2330. Don't forget, you can always stay in touch with us on Twitter, @CedricCreer, Instagram, CouncilwomanCreer, and Facebook, Councilman CedricCreer. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item. Put that up there. There we go. Please join me, my sponsorship of Coffee with a Cop. It'll be Monday, July 29th, from 9:00 to 10:30, at the Omelet House at Lake Mead and Rampart. Great place to have a breakfast, so you can come on out, talk to me. We'll have metro officers there, I have our deputy marshals there, and you get to ask them any questions you like. Let us know about issues in your neighborhood, and commiserate with your neighbors. So hopefully, we'll see you there Monday, July 29th, 9:00 to 10:30. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll go down to Councilwoman Diaz, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And keeping with the celebratory spirit here with my colleague, Councilwoman Creer's birthday, I celebrated my 19th anniversary to my wonderful husband yesterday. So I wanted to say happy anniversary to my husband, and it's been a blast, like all, marriage takes a lot of work. But I know that I wouldn't be here in the city council without his support, so he is instrumental in me keeping sane. Thank you very much, honey. I do have two announcements of things that are happening in Ward 3, so, but before I get into the announcements for the, those events, I do want to tell my constituents that I hope that they reach out to us with any needs they may have. My office is your office, and you may contact us at 702-229-2359. You can also follow us on social media. I'm on Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook, and all of my handles are my name, Olivia Diaz LV. I hope that you all are having wonderful summers, enjoying your children. As part of the children's summer concert series, The Lucky Band will perform Thursday, July 25th, at 10:30 AM, at Ward 3's Historic Fifth Street School. It's 401 North Fourth Street. So if you're thinking of things to do with your kids, I think this is a wonderful opportunity to enjoy as a family. The tickets are only $5 plus tax and fees. And there are group rates available for 10 or more, and that, my family would definitely qualify for that. And I also wanted to invite everyone who's listening in today, I know it's short notice, this event is happening tomorrow, but if you are thinking about other employment opportunities, we are recognizing the significant investment of Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act dollars into our neighborhood to fund employment and training programs during the Workforce Connections Community Investment Tour. And it will be happening tomorrow, Thursday, July 18th, at the East Las Vegas Library, 2851 East Bonanza Road. And it will be, we will be there one to two. Hopefully, you can stop by and learn what the One Star, One Stop Career Center is all about. And I just realized that Councilwoman Creer shares the same birthday that my mom has. So my mom will be also celebrating tomorrow.
Your mom will be 50.
Yes. I'm sticking to that story. Happy birthday, Mom. Feliz cumpleaños a ti.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Knudsen.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just can't compete with my colleagues up on the, on the dais here, and so I will say that I'm proud that I found my cell phone number. For anybody who didn't know, my phone number is 702-493-1547. I've already reached out to Ms. Graham, who was here earlier, but I'm proud of that, and I will stick with it.
Is that your office number?
That is my cell phone. Public, I've made it public for everyone. Anyone can call me at any time.
Wow, take advantage of this. Do you know your office number?
Don't put me on the record, no.
Oh, my God. He's got a lot to learn.
I'll find it. I will track people down and make sure they connect with me.
You're so funny. Okay, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm going to make this quick. So before we do our first item, which is, which is our only real item, the Las Vegas Police Protective Agency is having a school supply drive for our teachers. So they're gathering school supplies to give to the teachers in their classroom. So if you'd like to just pick some stuff up, whether it's crayons, pencils, notebooks, whatever, and drop it off at 9330 West Lake Mead in Las Vegas, that would be great. Now, for our own back-to-school, we are doing a splash back-to-school. We're going to swim from 5:00 PM to 7:00 on Friday, July 26th. We are packing backpacks full of great stuff for our students in, in Ward 6. We're going to have, you know, our DJ there, our food trucks there. It's Ward 6, it's a party. So let's go on to, let's talk about some of our missing children. So right now, we have located Rasar Soto. He was a 15-year-old male, and that is fabulous, fabulous news. Thank you for the community for helping to find Rasar. Our next child has been found, Christina Duran. She was 16-year-old female. Thank you again.
That's great news.
Yeah, it's, it's so great. And then, we are, we are missing a juvenile. She is a 15-year-old, and her name is Nikki Marie, Nikki Marie Dugan. She's 15, she's a female, she's 5'4", she's 120 pounds, she's got hazel eyes and brown hair. So please, if anyone knows where Nikki is, or, or sees her, please contact Las Vegas Metro Police at 702-828-3111, or our Nevada Childseekers at 702-458-7009. We are missing Isabella Cornell. Her nickname is Bella, and as you can see, she's beautiful. It means beautiful in Italian. She's a 15-year-old female. She's a 15-year-old female. She's 5'4", she's 130 pounds. Brown eyes, brown hair, African-American, beautiful girl. Please, if you guys know where Bella is, Isabella, please call Nevada's Childseekers at 702-458-7009, or Las Vegas Metro Police at 702-828-3111. And the last but not least, happy birthday, Councilwoman Creer. You see that? All for you.
Wonderful. Wonderful. You've had more celebrations. I mean, my gosh, thank goodness, it only happens once a year for you. I am just embarrassed by it. So anyway, happy birthday. Just quickly, for Saturday, July 27th, at 7:30 PM at Cashman, our Las Vegas Lights will be playing. It's a great event, so well-supported by our community and those from out of town who love the number-one sport in the world. And of course, as you know, we continue to pursue our own franchise, hopefully from the MLS. And I want to thank our staff who've been so supportive and stays with us through it all. And everybody on tech that works through this so that Dave Briggelman can get us started on time and we can get off a break.
There they are, waving.
So there they are. It's hard to see, but we thank you, and we thank you. And our marshals and all of our staff. And certainly, it's wonderful to have our seated councilpersons here now in their second meeting. Our next council meeting will be August 7th at 9 o'clock here in these chambers. We hope you stay safe, get involved, stay involved, don't melt in the heat, and know that we're so lucky we're not in any flood channel. We wish everybody that's in the, certainly along the Gulf, safety, and hopefully the rains will stop. But wish you all and our clerks for sure, and our legal staff, everybody that works to make life better in this city. Thank you very much. Have a lovely evening and happy birthday. And to my husband on his 80th. On the 26th is the real date, but he loves celebration, and we're starting tomorrow night, so, down to Fremont Street. So be there, see you. We are adjourned. Thank you, thank you.